I'd like to call to order the August 6, 2013, meeting of the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners, and as always, we will start with the Pledge Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, if you'll join me in prayer. God, thank you for a wonderful summer season. We're so blessed with moderate four-season weather here, and often fail to appreciate the balance you've given to nature to provide us with flowers, plants, trees, food, that provide for all your creatures. As school begins to prepare and get initiated for another year, bless all the students, teachers, administrative staff, principals, and all the parents who care for our future and care for our children, the opportunities they have in education. Thank you for these men and women who sit up here as commissioners. Our community is so fortunate to have a group like this that all care for the county and work hard to make sure we try to enact the best laws we can, that help citizens and businesses thrive and spread prosperity to as many people as we can. Give us wisdom and discernment tonight as we take up many issues and proposals that impact many lives, lifestyles, and other decisions. Thank you for the amazing time, place, and chance we have to make a difference and improve our county the best we can. Amen. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Commission, it's the duty of every Commissioner to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict. Does any Commissioner know of any known conflict or appearance of conflict with respect to any matter coming before our Board today? If not, we will proceed on to public comment. Time limit for any public comment is three minutes. If your time expires, you may leave any questions with your name, address, phone number, or email with the county manager, and we'll get back with you. Commissioners are not expected to comment on matters during public comment. The comments should be limited to subjects that are within our jurisdiction or pertain to matters upon which we may act. Any individual speaking during public comment shall address the entire Commission. Any polling of Commissioners is inappropriate. Persons addressing the Commission are expected to observe the decorum of the chamber and to be respectful for everyone in the room. Any person who willfully interrupts, disturbs, or disrupts the session will be asked to leave the meeting, and the Commission deserves the right to deny any public address on any subject previously presented to the Commission. If you will give your name and where you live, we'll start public comment. Who'd like to have part of public comment tonight? Yes, ma'am, second row. You'll go over here.
My name's Amanda Hall. I live at 156 Black Oak Drive. My comments are very short tonight. I would like to, on behalf of all the residents up there, thank Wanda Green, Matt Stone, Jerry V. Hahn, Kurt Euler. We're the -- where the house is sliding. And really thank all the county personnel. We're a small community, but I know we've been a large volume of phone calls and emails, and everybody has been very responsive, and I know we're moving forward. And we just wanted to thank the county staff very much.
Thank you so much. We are sorry about the actions and everything that's going on there. Any other public comment? And I would remind everybody, if people are here on any of the ETJ or the Charlotte Highway rezoning request, we're going to have a public hearing on that, so while you're welcome to get up now, it might be more appropriate to talk during the public hearing, because that's when we're going to be focused in on that one. So any other public comment tonight? Mr. Rice? Go ahead. Ma'am, on the third row, you're welcome. Lisa? Okay, Lisa Baldwin, come in. Ms. Baldwin is a member of the Buncombe County Board of Education. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you. I live in Fairview. My name's Lisa Baldwin. I'm here because you're voting to approve the purchase price for INCA Intermediate School property. I sympathize with the overcrowding at the INCA Middle School, but I have many concerns and unanswered questions regarding the build of another, yet another, intermediate school. School boards are to vet decisions and ensure that the optimal solution is reached. Our board has not done this regarding the situation at INCA Middle School. There's been no parent interest survey. There's been no public hearing. This is a top-down decision made by the Buncombe County School Central Office administrators, which they expect to be rubber stamped by a board majority. We've seen no data showing that intermediate schools are the best approach to education. We also have seen no financial data concerning the operating costs of this school. Just because we have $22 million sitting in a bank account that's earmarked for construction of schools and debt repayment does not mean we have to spend it. In fact, a bill was proposed in this last legislative session to make that Article 39 sales tax revenue more flexible, so it could be spent on digital learning, teacher professional development, other things like that. And I'd love to see this board support that bill going into the next session. It did not make it for passage in this past session. But as you know, bricks and mortar is not as important as teaching and learning and focusing dollars on the classroom. So, the bottom line is that there are too many unanswered questions to approve the purchase of land for an INCA intermediate. I would like to encourage this board to ask for a professional capacity study to be conducted for all Buncombe County schools before proceeding to approve the INCA intermediate site. Ask the Buncombe County Board of Education to look at other options that are less expensive but will achieve a win-win situation. Back in 2008, it seems what was needed in the Robertson District was not an intermediate school, but an elementary school. There are only three elementary schools there, while other similar-sized Buncombe County feeder districts have four to five elementary schools. So, when Coontz was built, it could now be changed to a four-to-five school or an elementary school to accommodate students in the INCA District. Only a small number of INCA students could be redrawn into the Robertson District. The Robertson District would then have surplus capacity in all their schools, most likely, if Coontz became a four-to-five school or an elementary school. This is not going to cost $22 million to build.
Okay, Ms. Baldwin. Thank you, and thank you for your service on the board. Any other public comment? Yes, ma'am, Michelle Pace Woods.
Hi. Thank you so much. My name is Michelle Pace Wood. I do have a daughter in the INCA School District. Thank you so much for listening and for taking this up today. This is a really important issue. There's been a lot of misinformation about the INCA Middle School. A lot of folks are saying things like it's a bureaucratic process, for instance, or that it's not something that the parents have had input on. This school board actually voted, and if you go back through the record, in the least -- or the solution that they voted on back in '07, this school should have been built last year, and it was not started. I understand there were some problems, financial problems, and things changed, other things came up. But they already voted on this, and they already got a parent survey, because they surveyed all three school districts when that happened. So, we have been patiently waiting for this school to be built. We understand in that district that fiscal responsibility is important. We now are in a situation where we have three other elementary schools that are starting to become overcrowded, one of which will be at crisis level per the last school board fiscal report they did in two years. INCA Middle has always been very, very overcrowded. It's been the high schools in the '50s, and then it was changed, they added on. And if you look at the data, it is the most overcrowded middle school west of Charlotte. And there's a reason that those are not at that capacity. It's too easy for kids to become anonymous at INCA Middle. INCA High has a low graduation rate. I know you guys look for that and work for that. If you're anonymous in middle school, you're not engaged when you go to high school. We feel like it's really important. If you build this school, when you do, and I hope you'll vote to go ahead and buy this land, you're going to solve four school crowding problems with one build. It is the fiscally responsible decision to do. You know, we know that the parents out there have supported it. We've all been waiting patiently. We appreciate you finally taking a look at this. We would appreciate you voting for the land tonight. If you wait, it would have been $18.2 million if you'd done it when you first did it. Now, it's 22. The longer you wait, the more expensive. This bill is coming. It is coming, no matter what, and let's go ahead and pay it now, when it's cheaper for all the schools and cheaper to buy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wood. Any other public comment tonight? Yes, sir, in the back.
Thank you. My name is John Sutton. I'm also a Canler resident and a parent of two children that are in Hominy Valley Elementary School. I'm here tonight to, I guess, speak on behalf of the parents and business owners in Canler. We support this school being built. The studies have been done. We've been waiting for the school. I want to thank the Commissioners that have worked hard and the school board to get this school, this project, back on the agenda and back moving forward. We don't want to see a step backwards. I just want to thank you for your vote yes tonight, and keep this project moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton. Any other public comment? Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. On the intermediate school, I've lived in INCA all my life, and we welcome something, not necessarily this particular school or this particular site. This particular site, I want to speak to because Ms. Baldwin has been beat up over the years for talking about environmental issues. Well, you're looking at a man that can read you several thousand pages of environmental issues related to the BASF property, and this particular piece of property for the school district has got the Hominy Creek running through it, and it's one of the most contaminated creeks in Buncombe County, and it's going to stay that way for some time. And it runs around the property, and it goes through the bottom side of the property. So, how accessible is the kid's going to be to this creek and other contamination? Not only that, you're looking at aquatic center in the future of $30 million, and you're going to be putting things in there that is going to be contamination, looking at contamination as well. People that's getting up here and asking for the school and talking about the school, listen, this is a commercial district. You know, it's hard to find commercial property, not commercial, but industrial property. Why don't we leave it as commercial and industrial and find a place for the school in a good location and not put our kids at risk, not only from the environmental point of view, and I've got data to support what I'm saying. You can get any study you want to to support, and we'll hear from superintendent that they've drilled these little 40-foot holes and 50-foot holes. You'll hear all this, but it's going to say exactly what you want to hear. This thing has been done in reverse. It usually goes to the school board, and you hear all these things, and then it comes over here. I'm afraid it's not been to the extent of what we've been hearing tonight. But my concern is very much about the environmental issues, and it's not about this little study that's been done. So, don't, whatever superintendent had to say about that, don't confuse that with what I've got to say, because I've talked to the people in Raleigh, and I've already filed complaints, not complaints, but in my public comment to the Brownfield site on this property, and let me tell you, the head chief in Raleigh said it was heavily contaminated at BASF. Now, that's on the basin. This basin runs at the lower end of this school property in a long stretch, so we've got some more work to be done here, and I'm happy to work on it with you. I'll sit down and talk to any one of you, if you'd like to, because I don't think the data has been given to you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rice. Is there any other public? Yes, ma'am, in the back.
Thank you, Commissioners. I am Emily Sutton Desio. I'm here to support the approval of the 5-6 school in INCA. I'm a business owner, and I live in INCA Village. INCA Village is directly across the street from the proposed site. I'm a member of the INCA Park Commission, and I'm also a member of the INCA Canler Business Co-op. And I can tell you, in all of our meetings, we all support the funding of this school, and we support the hard work you're doing, support the hard work of the school board. I'm a parent of a four-year-old, and I hope she can attend this school. You really can't focus on learning and teaching when there aren't enough chairs in the classroom, and the INCA 5-6 school is a fiscally responsible solution to a problem addressing three schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sutton. Any other comments tonight? Seeing none, we'll go to our first public hearing, which is the rezoning request on the Rosenberger Charlotte Highway from RLD to NS. And we'll have Debbie Trumpy to talk about the background behind this.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Did you mean to skip over the consent agenda items for approval?
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry. I sure did. Is there a motion to adopt the -- thank you, Mr. Fry. Is there a motion to follow the agenda, including adoption of the consent agenda items, with the exception of the resolution on the organic waste and the school capital fund project that will be pulled up and discussed in more detail?
Second.
It's been a motion by Commissioner Frost. There's a second by Vice Chair Jones to follow our amended agenda as I have discussed. Is there any discussion among the Commissioners? If not, all those in favor of following the agenda as revised, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The motion carries seven to zero. Now, we're ready to go with the public hearing on the rezoning request, and we'll start with Debbie Trumpy to tell us a little bit about the background and what has happened up to this point.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. C. Darrell Rosenberger has applied to rezone a portion of tax lot PIN 9677-212223, which is approximately six acres from RLD, residential low-density, to NS, Neighborhood Service District. The subject property is located at the southeast corner of the intersection of Charlotte Highway and Cedar Mountain Road, and is currently wooded and undeveloped. The Planning Department is recommending denial of this application. The tract is steep with an average natural slope of over 42% and has both steep slope, high elevation, and protected ridge zoning overlays. The surrounding area is comprised of other large undeveloped tracts of land and residential development. The nearest commercially zoned property is approximately 2,000 feet away to the east and to the west of the property. This rezoning could be viewed as a spot zoning by the courts, as it does not include several property owners nor a large amount of land in relation to the surrounding area. The proposed map amendment would not be consistent with the Buncombe County Comprehensive Land Use Plan, as the 2006 update indicates that the RLD, Low Density Residential District, is primarily intended to provide locations for low-density residential and related type development in areas where topographic or other constraints preclude intense urban development. RLD is the appropriate zoning classification for this property, given the topography of the site. NS would not be appropriate, as the portion that has been requested to be rezoned has a slope greater than 33% and contains steep slope, high elevation overlay districts. The requested zoning would not be reasonable nor in the public interest, as it would allow a commercial use to encroach into an area characterized by low-density residential development. The Planning Board held a public hearing on this application on June 17. Three people spoke during public comment, and all were against the proposed rezoning. The speakers expressed concerns about traffic, safety, and volume, noise and light pollution, stormwater runoff, and the loss of a critical wildlife corridor. The Planning Department has continued to receive communications about this application, and they have all been against this rezoning. The Planning Board, after deliberations, did find that the proposed rezoning would be reasonable and in the public interest and would be consistent with the land use plan, as NS is designed to allow for a mix of residential, commercial, business, and service uses in limited areas at key intersections leading to residential neighborhoods. The Planning Board voted to recommend approval of this on a four-to-one vote. There is a complicated zoning history for this piece of property that I'd like to tell you about. In 2007, when we were developing county-wide zoning, this property was proposed to be RLD. During that process, it was allowed for people to request a zoning other than what had been proposed for their property, and the owner did request NS for the property. The planning staff looked at it and, given the topography and surrounding area, denied that request, which was appealed to the Planning Board. The Planning Board at that hearing compromised, basically, and said, "The front along 74 can be NS. The middle part would be R3 residential, and the back part, the steepest part, still remain RLD." So, when 2007 county-wide zoning was adopted, that parcel had three different zoning districts across it. After the appeals court nullified that 2007 zoning, we were advised by our attorneys to review those zoning maps for anything that the courts would consider spot zoning. And we did identify that as something that would be considered spot zoning, and when the 2009 zoning was adopted, that parcel was zoned as RLD. Right after that zoning was adopted in early 2010, the owner applied to rezone that parcel to NS again. The Planning Board at that point did recommend approving the rezoning, but the Board of Commissioners, at their public hearing, denied that application. Later in that year, in October 2010, we adopted the zoning overlays, and this parcel has both the steep slope, high elevation, and the protected ridge overlays on it. The part that is being requested for the rezoning does have steep slope and high elevation overlays. I'd be happy to address any questions you have for me right now.
Any questions for Ms. Trumpy?
This property, I've been watching it for quite a few years. But before zoning come into effect, it was for sale for business. Then zoning come into effect, that was put on, then it was illegal, but it was commercial. Then, when we, zoning went away, then it came back, then it came to this board, again, five of them, with the Planning Board saying it could be commercial, but then the five voted that it couldn't be commercial. Then the gentleman, I sat and watched, because I drive that way every day, I watched him take his paintbrush and paint commercial off of it. Well, the facts that are forgotten in this whole issue is, we've got Cedar Cliffs down the mountain, or whatever. I live in Windsong. But we have people that send us a bunch of emails, and I appreciate every one of them. But I still look at the side of the property rights of the people that own the property. This man spent $100,000 to get sewer up to that point that tied in to, what's his name up there, Cedar Cliffs?
The Cliffs.
Cliffs that are on Charlotte Highway there. So, it runs from one side of the road up to that side of the road, and this man spent $100,000, plus, we forget the man lost his property in the process, because once this board took it from commercial down to housing, that took the value of the property away. So, not only one sign I've seen up there, I saw a sign where it went into foreclosure. Now, how it's all come back around, this is before I was Commissioner, you just watch properties, and it's the top of the mountain. I've looked at the maps. It can be worked out. I live in a development that, we had an option before zoning come in, to buy some property to tie to our subdivision. We didn't buy it, but we ended up with four apartments, with four apartments each in it, plus in the flat area next to the stream, there is warehouses. But what we did, we just put a fence up. So, we had an option, but now we've given people the option to tell us what we need to do with our land. That's the problem, that this one Commissioner, whatever the other Commissioners think, we are telling people what they can do with their land. I see people that live on steep slopes, it's already there, that don't want a house on that slope over the other side, because that tires their view shed. I was totally against the zoning to start with. We have trailers next to the development in. It has not hurt my property value, any, the development that I live in. We have, you pull out of our development, there's a little business on the left that sells tires. Good for them. That brings money into Fairview. When you're telling people that they can't put something, that's taking our tax revenue away. If somebody come in there and spend a million dollars, sell them a nice condo, that it could have been developed in that area. I mean, I sat and watched an area that was a whole mountain taken away down there at the foot where they sell cemetery stones, but we've approved it for a hotel. And how they're going to get it in there, I don't know, because they've took half the mountain away, so they're going to have to build one of them high walls behind it. I don't want an 80-foot wall in Fairview. Again, I saw that. I don't see that happening here. But basically, the man's just wanting to try to make a living and sell his property. If there's something wrong with that, I have a problem. It's a simple fact. There's too much in this issue. I understand a lot of peoples against it. The only thing I'm against is, we had an option in my development to buy a partial, and we didn't buy it, but it hasn't affected us in any way, shape, or form, except we put a fence up. If the people don't want it, then the best thing I can say is, they just need to buy it. We're giving people options, 20 people options, to send emails to us to tell us what we need to do. I don't feel comfortable with it, and that's just the way I feel. There's more to this than the story says.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Fry. Any other questions for Ms. Trumpy? If not, thank you, ma'am. We'll start our public hearing. We'll hear from any members of the public that like to be heard. We'll take, we'll have a three-minute time limit. If you have any other information, you can leave it with us. We have heard from a lot of folks, and thank you for talking to us about your concerns here. And now is your time to talk to us before we close the public hearing and take a vote. The time now, we'll start the public hearing at 4:58. Any members of the public wish to be heard? Yes, sir. And you, I'll tell you what, let's, why don't you go next, you gentlemen in the fourth row. You'll go first, Mr. in the tie, and we'll have you sit on the front row, if you could, over here. Let's get the number of people that want to speak. Let's go, you in the, you behind the post can't see you now. You take the first seat. Sir, you and the cat, if you'll remove your hat, you'll get the second seat. And you on the other side, ma'am with the white shirt, we'll have you have the third seat next to Ms. Trumpy, and we'll take you in order, and then we'll go, we'll take another look at it after we get started. Thank you, sir. Go ahead. I'm sorry. Go ahead. We're going to get organized here.
Hello.
Give your name and where you live, sir.
Hello. I'm Alan Helmick. I've lived in Fairview for 30 years since October. I've been a top-producing North Carolina Realtor for 30 years, now with Carol Williams, specializing in Fairview. I've sold hundreds of homes. I've sold hundreds of homes, thousands of acres, most of which I've deed restricted. I've done everything I could to help and protect Fairview. Every property anyone sold on Highway seventy-four A had commercial prices with commercial value. Department of Transportation took property to five-lane Highway seventy-four A in two thousand and assured everyone that they were leaving us with commercial potential and value. I'm here to plead my case because I feel there's been a real injustice done in zoning. I used to own this ten-acre tract, and now I'm a partner with the new owner, Darryl Rosenberg. I had this property listed for sale as commercial and open-use zoning with engineered building plans. August two thousand and four, I paid to run the sewer to this property at a cost of two hundred thousand dollars and received a ninety-seven thousand, five-hundred gallon sewer allotment from Buncombe County. Later, South Cliff tied onto it and helped me with the cost. In two thousand and seven, when Buncombe County zoned the Metropolitan Sewage District, which I'm now in, South Cliff was granted twenty acres commercial. My ten acres was zoned residential low-density. I appealed to have six acres of the ten acres zoned Neighborhood Services, knowing I would never get commercial. The Planning Board and the Commissioners approved Neighborhood Services on this property. But then the zoning was kicked out. In two thousand and ten, or nine, when zoning, when Buncombe County had again zoned the Metropolitan Sewage District, my ten acres was again zoned residential low-density. I appealed again, and the Planning Board approved Neighborhood Services. The Commissioners did not. This is a prime six-acre tract located on a corner intersection. It has public water, sewer, gas, electric, cable, et cetera, with DOT curb access onto Highway seventy-four A. This property has seven hundred foot of road frontage on a five-lane Highway seventy-four A, six hundred foot frontage on state-maintained Cedar Mountain Road, and rear access on Atherton. This property is bordered by a cell tower and a large city water reservoir tank with right-of-way on Atherton through this property. I don't feel like this is spot zoning. This property is separated from the other commercial because of topography. Every property around this, up and down the highway, is steep, either straight uphill or straight downhill, which would also prevent the spreading of commercial development in the future. This corner property at a main intersection is terraced in three plateaus, and is perfect location for small Neighborhood Services. It has large neighborhoods all around it, the zoning, all around it. This zoning change will not only increase the tax revenue for the county, it will benefit the community. Again, for the third time, the Planning Board has approved Neighborhood Service for this six-acre track. I hope the Commissioners agree.
Thank you, Alan. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm David Holt, I live out in Fairview. And my concern about this is the fact that you're creating a traffic hazard there. I would invite all of you to go drive up Minehole Gap, come over the top, turn around and come back, and just see what a blind hill that is coming down. We live on Cedar Mountain Road, so when you come out of Cedar Mountain Road, I invite you to turn in there and then try to turn left out of there. Putting a development in there like you're talking about, or he's talking about, with commercial and residential, is gonna create a great deal of traffic right there, it's a very dangerous place. Our daughter was killed on Highway seventy-four, right out in another curve, and since that curve's been rectified by the state, they cleared that up. You're gonna have to clear this one up, too, if you make this, if you vote this in, because there's gonna be accidents there. There was a young woman killed, a young girl killed, and her mother seriously injured, just a hundred yards from where we're talking about this development being, just three months ago. You need to drive out there and look at it, it's not a safe place for a commercial development. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Holt. It's good to see you again. Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name's Jeremy Jones. I live on Cedar Mountain Road, and this has got more to do with putting up fences, just like the gentleman mentioned. It is a hazard. You're looking down a double-barrel shotgun when you turn left out of Cedar Mountain, and that's just before the crest of the hill. We've got runoff from that disaster that was created up the road to Chestnut Mountain that still has not been, it's still falling today. There's, it's a scenic highway, all this stuff was brought up three years ago, and there hadn't been nothing changed. We're not planting any more trees, so we've still got the last bit of the woods before the Swanonoa Valley. So, I'm here today to say I oppose this and would like to see it not ever be brought up again.
Thank you, Mr. Gents. Who else wants to be heard on this? Let me get Lady in the Purple and the three people, just you three together, y'all come on up. We'll do you in order. And gentlemen, okay, you three first, and then we'll hear from, I'll tell you what, you go ahead, you're close, you go ahead, and you three, you three have a seat. We'll do it that way.
Just come on up.
My name is Frank Wortman. I live on Butler Mountain, which is the mountain that is serviced by Cedar Mountain Road. We have three subdivisions up there, there are representatives here, I think, from all three of the subdivisions. We're representing about eighty different lots and about sixty different people. All of the reasons that the staff from Planning and zoning gave are accurate. We shouldn't be even considering this. I'm confused by what P&amp;Z Board did, because they didn't take into account anything that they said. It's a dangerous intersection, it's going to cause water runoff across a road where the guy who lives there at the, where the downhill comes in to Cedar Mountain Road, he just had to fix his driveway because of the drainage problem. And it's not, they haven't paved that hill yet. I would urge you, and I've got some photographs with me, if you're not sure about the slope of this land, first of all, take a look at the map that your staff gave you, because if you look at the little topographical lines, you'll see how steep this is. But photos from the air will also show you how steep it is. It's gonna be ugly, because if you sit on the overpass at the East Asheville Home Depot, you can see the cell tower and everything that's in front of it. So you're gonna be able to see this from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wortman. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Gina Donatelli Maselli, and I own land off, with my husband off of Cedar Mountain Road, and we hope to build a house there someday and raise a family there. And nothing terrifies me more than the thought that this dangerous stretch of road could get even more dangerous for the family that we hope to raise there someday. It's, like they said, it's a blind curve, it's a very steep road. When it rains, the water just runs down it, kinda like a, you know, slide at a waterpark, and cars, just every time it rains, you expect to see someone run into the rock wall, because it just, it happens almost every single time. And the thought of additional entrances to business further complicating those traffic patterns is a nightmare. And I'm just here on behalf of myself and my family and friends that live in Fairview to urge you to please deny this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Donatelli. Yes, ma'am, or yes, y'all decide.
Hi there, my name is Darren Stroop, and I live on Cedar Mountain Road, just around the bend from the main intersection that has been spoken of, which is not a main intersection, it's a side road that comes off a hill. My wife and I moved there from Asheville in two thousand and nine, and we've been very happy to live in this neighborhood in the mountains with the mature forests and the wildlife, the clear, starry nights, and the quiet. Rezoning this property at the crest of Minehole Gap as commercial would have negative impact on all the things we find valuable in this neighborhood. The effects of rezoning would lead to an increase in noise pollution from the cutting down of trees, construction, increased traffic congestion, and possibly from whatever business is built on the parcel, we still have no idea what that's going to be. Soil erosion runoff from the site is inevitable, and it would affect the health of Gases Creek, which runs through the base of that property and follows seventy-four to the Swanonoa River. Soil erosion and the resulting runoff will also lead to increased costs in road maintenance and the property degradation for surrounding neighbors. We'd see the loss of mature forest and a critical wildlife corridor on a mountain that is not only located on an historic scenic byway, but that can be seen all the way from I forty. There would be an increase in light pollution in our neighborhood from any resulting development, and there would be an increase in traffic hazards and congestion at the end of our road. Unfortunately, the Planning Board totally dismissed these and other concerns, as well as the clear analysis and recommendation of the Planning Department. There was no substantive discussion or debate about the merits or demerits of rezoning, and it seemed clear they were not familiar with the property or the surrounding area. In the end, what swayed them was that the property owner had invested money in the property. And had I been able to speak again, I would have pointed out to the planners that my wife and I didn't get our house for free. We, in fact, made a thirty-year investment, and our neighbors have made like investments. My next question would have been, will the owner and his partner still be there in thirty years, or even two years, or will they have made their money and moved on, leaving me and my wife and the rest of the neighborhood to deal with the fallout from this business deal and unsuitable development? So I ask you Commissioners, have some forethought in this matter. Please follow the analysis and recommendation of the Department of Planning to deny rezoning. Please respect the residents' overwhelming stance against allowing a commercial development to encroach into our neighborhood. Please respect the surrounding natural environment that we live in and enjoy, and that so many others also enjoys, they pass through it every day. And please respect our safety, our quality of life, and the investments we've made in our properties in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stroop. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Jamie K. Young. I'm an Asheville native. I was born and raised in Fairview. I only left Fairview for five years in order to go to college. I have a bachelor's in science with a minor in geology. My main concern here is the environment. I left school for five years. I only got to come home on the weekends, and every weekend I came home, there was something new being built, more dangers being produced by the developments. The highway has only gotten more dangerous. Whenever I was in sixth grade, during my English class, I heard the sirens go off in order to blow up the mountain to make the five-lane highway. We all thought it was a blessing originally, because it would take an hour to get to school because of the traffic being backed up. Whenever I was thirteen years old, I was at a Halloween party, and right as the road was being built, I was outside, and one of my friends decided, I don't know why, decided to go over to the food line to get something to drink and come back, not alcohol, we were thirteen. On his way back, he didn't see a car coming, and he got hit by a car on seventy-four. I was thirteen years old and had to watch one of my best friends get killed and roll over the top of a car and fall into a ditch. One of the last things I want to see happen to Fairview is too much further development. I don't mind if you pick a flat piece of land, I don't mind if it's on the road. What I do care about is the safety of our community. I plan on raising children here. I'm twenty-six years old, my parents brought us here, and whenever I left for college, I thought I was going to leave forever. And it's whenever I left that I truly gained an appreciation for Fairview. I had every opportunity to go to New York City and do internships with photographers, that's what I do. I was actually begged at one point, but I wanted Fairview, I wanted my slice of heaven. I'm about to own a house. My life savings are gonna go into that. And I just, I couldn't, I really honestly can't deal with somebody getting hurt because of this happening. Cedar Mountain Road is one of the most terrifying roads to be, not only on, to drive from Emmons Grove Road to the end that connects to seventy-four, but in order to pull out of Cedar Mountain on seventy-four, it's almost like playing Russian roulette. You don't know if there's a car coming until you're out of the road. I do not like going down this road myself. It will cause bad drainage, which is already existing, there are few drainages as it is, and most of the time they're clogged. They never get clean, actually, yesterday I saw somebody cleaning them up, that was the first time I've ever seen that. And just mainly, I want us to keep our community beautiful. And like I said, I don't mind if it's on the road, and I don't mind if it's on a flat piece of land, just, it doesn't need to be in a dangerous place. And I understand that he spent the money on the property, as have I with my own, and he shouldn't be told what to do, but this is for the safety of him and whoever will, you know, reside.
Thank you, Ms. Young.
Thank you.
Who else wants to be heard? Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir, Beard, and the lady next to Mr. Stroop. Anybody else? Y'all come on up, you'll start, sir. Okay?
Good evening, thanks for the opportunity to speak. I was here three years ago.
Name where you live.
I'm sorry. My name is Steve Schmeizer, I live in Fairview. I'm here representing my wife and I, who are Fairview residents. I'm also here representing the North Carolina Wildlife Federation as the past president of the local chapter called Mountain Wild. As I was saying, I was here three years ago. I was at the Planning Board meeting in June, and I share the views expressed by Mr. Stroop that the Planning Board meeting was a little bit strange, and I didn't feel the issues were explored by the Planning Board. I wanted to say that nothing has changed since the zoning was denied three years ago. The current zoning is correct, it's a scenic ridgeline property, it has steep slopes, stormwater runoffs really are a problem, adjoining parcels are all residential. Rezoning would clearcut a minimum of six acres, that's close to six football fields, think about that. A huge scar on the mountain, at the top of the mountain, visible from the entire Asheville Basin. I came here three years ago, and I'm here again tonight on behalf of the North Carolina Wildlife Federation, to say that this parcel is in the middle of a wildlife migration corridor. This corridor was designated by the Land of Sky Regional Council, of which Buncombe County is a member, during the Linking Lands and Communities Study that I was a part of several years ago. We selected this as a critical wildlife migration corridor for two reasons. It is an existing wildlife migration corridor. We felt it would be protected because of the zoning in the master plan, does only allow for low-density development, we felt the tree canopy would remain. But the second major reason that we selected it is, it is the only remaining wildlife corridor south of Asheville in Buncombe County that essentially goes east and west. So, this parcel would cut half of that out. You may remember Mr. Gant and Ms. Jones, that three years ago, the owners of the adjacent parcel, which I think is eighteen to twenty acres, that's finishing the crest and down into Fairview, they were here and they were denied rezoning. They'll be back if you approve this one, and will have lost the entire wildlife corridor. I would close by saying, I did some research on this property, Mr. Rosenberg purchased it on March twenty-second of this year. He knew how it was zoned, and he's a resident of Florida. He hasn't been at any of the hearings. I would invite him to move up and live on his parcel. We would welcome him as a taxpayer in our, in our community. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Schmeizer. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, can you hear me? I'm Kendra Sarvati, I live at thirty-five Cedar Mountain Road with my husband, Darren. And I know that some of the folks that have already spoken have talked about how the traffic is a huge concern, so I'm not gonna, I'm just gonna reiterate that I agree, but I'm not going to recap it, really. I do want to point out, though, that according to the definition of a Neighborhood Service District, it should be compatible with the residential character of the area. It shouldn't add to traffic congestion, it shouldn't cause noise, or dust, or odors, or fire hazards, or lighting objectionable to surrounding residents, and it shouldn't visually detract from the appearance of the neighborhood. And I think another fellow mentioned that just after you turn onto our road, there is actually a residence directly across the way from the parcel in question, and there are three homes up on Atherton Way that overlook the parcel directly, and I think that they would all be very affected in those ways by any development in that area. And I think that all of us who live there would find the character of our neighborhood drastically changed by this development. It's a quiet and densely forested residential area, and we live there because we value those qualities. We talked with many of our neighbors in recent weeks, and to make sure that they knew about this proposal, and no one liked the idea of a commercial development at the end of our road. And I don't want to speak for any of those folks, but I personally think our neighborhood is already very well-serviced by the Neighborhood Service District at the bottom of the hill. There's an Ingalls and a CBS and gas stations and a handful of restaurants. And when I drove by recently, there were also about seven vacancies, so I think that there are plenty of spaces for potential business owners to provide more services to those neighborhoods. And also, I think that Neighborhood Services is kind of a misleading term here. I don't think the owner really wants to provide services to our neighborhood, and if he did, he'd know that we're not really interested. I think he made some investments that maybe didn't work out like he thought, but that's not our fault, and the neighborhood shouldn't be expected to help him defray those costs. And to conclude, I, my husband and I took a petition around because we thought there might be some folks that wouldn't be able to make it today. And I'll give the petition to you, but I just want to summarize the results. We petitioned from the intersection of Cedar Mountain Road and seventy-four A, all the way up to the base of the Cheston Mountain Development at Winterview Drive, and it's pretty much the neighborhood that's in closest proximity to the lot in question. We spoke with most of the folks. Out of the twenty-five homes in the area, twenty-three Out of the 25 homes in the area, 23 are occupied. Four weren't home. Whenever we visited, we went at least three times. Two of the households didn't support it, but didn't want to sign because they wanted more info, and one could see both sides of the issue and was neither for nor against. So that remained, that leaves 16 households or 22 residents right in this area who are strongly opposed to the rezoning and, and signed the petition, which I will leave with you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Sarvati. Any other public comment tonight? Yes, yes, ma'am, in the white shirt.
Good afternoon. My name is Petra Essouge, and I live on Butler Mountain. I'm one of the dreaded Floridians. We have a second home in Butler Mountain Estates. I've lived there with my sister just under half the year. We love it any time of, any time of the year. And I thoroughly oppose the proposed rezoning. I agree with everything that's been said to support that opposition. And also, from my impression of Reynolds Village, there's so much space there for businesses to start up, and so many businesses start up and disappear, that to me, it doesn't seem the economy at this time supports another neighborhood services development. I totally agree with the dangerous traffic situation with the runoff. Cedar Mountain Road, whilst we're talking to the county commissioners, could really do with resurfacing and should really be regraded, but that's another problem. But there's really no, in my mind, no viable reason for there to be more neighborhood services. So please consider our quality of life, consider the natural resource that's dwindling fast, and please oppose this rezoning. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other public comment? Yes, ma'am, in the purple. Anybody else besides this lady? Okay. Somebody over here? Okay, just come on up and have a seat in the batter's box there.
I'm Karen Frye, and I live off of Cedar Mountain Road, and I just wanted to share my concerns. Wildlife corridor, it is. I've seen two bears in the past three years, you know, walking on Cedar Mountain Road. They probably crossed 74, and they're going north, and it's an all-wooded, steep bank. The road, Cedar Mountain Road where it hits 74, it's really hard to pull out there. I've got two teenage daughters, and it's scary when they go to high school, Reynolds High School. They have to pull out, cross two lanes of traffic. There's two other lanes coming over the mountain. You really can't see them. You know, ask them to pull on the middle lane, and you know, there's a lot of times where you think it's clear. You start to pull out, and somebody's coming, you know, 60 miles an hour over the gap there, and it's dangerous. I can't imagine having more traffic at the top of that mountain pulling out, and I'm concerned about that. The runoff, there's water on Cedar Mountain Road. It freezes in the wintertime. There's a lot of debris and sand that runs off the mountain there, and you know, they're having problems with it now. Every time it rains, we've got water and gravel and dirt, and it makes the road very dangerous. And I think that land is really steep. Again, I wouldn't mind. If the owner wants to build a house, that's great, but it's really steep land, and I don't think it needs to be commercial or multifamily dwelling. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frye. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Tristan St. Clair, and I live on 11 Atherton Way, that nice little gravel road we've been talking about. And that's my gravel that goes down. But the, we're only three of us that live on there, so there really isn't a reason to pave it. So that's okay. I grew up on a farm. I'm good with it. I'm also a tree hugger, just so you know who I am. And I really am trying to thank down the road for our future generations, these young couples who've spoken, who are planning on having their families here, and I have three grown children. I was your neighbor for a while. And I really would like to see us do something for the future. Everything is not about the almighty dollar. And I completely understand where you're coming from. My family owns property up in Maryland, and we went through the same thing. We wanted to zone part of the property commercial. Lots of people in the community didn't want it that way. And I voted against it because I did not want to add to that. I wanted to be able to go home as an adult and not have commercial property there. I wanted to go home to my farm. I wanted it to be a farm. A little idealistic, but you know, I was hopeful. And you know, I can see the same thing with this. I had bears come to my back door. Yay! I'm not afraid. And deer, wild turkeys, chipmunks, all kinds of birds. And what I did in Maryland was voted against my own inheritance because I decided the money was not as important to me as making a future for the land and future generations. And I just think it takes more than just thinking now in this little pot of the money-making scheme, and if we can just think about the future and our children.
Thank you, Ms. St. Clair. Any other public comment tonight? If not, I'll declare the public hearing closed at 5:26. Any comments with commissioners? Comments or motions?
I'd like to make a motion to deny the request.
Do you have a comment?
And I'd like to comment as well.
Okay. Let's go and get, is there a second to the motion, then I'll get comments.
Second.
The motion by Commissioner Frost, a second by Vice Chair Jones. Comments from commissioners?
I drove out and looked at this land, and I had the pleasure of having my 11-year-old granddaughter with me. And she lives in the Little Cliffs, in, behind where the big wall is, as you all are familiar with. And she asked what we were doing, and I said, "We're checking this out because someone wants to eventually build a lot of stuff there." And we looked at the quiet houses. She said how peaceful it was. And then, as we were leaving, we took about 15 minutes to get back on 74. And I said, "Well, that was kind of scary, wasn't it?" And she said, "Grandma, this isn't going to work." And for, for all the reasons everyone has said, this just doesn't fit. Fellow commissioners before me have worked very hard for steep slopes. We need to honor that, and we need to honor the community.
Thank you. Commissioner Belch?
Yeah. I went out today and looked at this property. I drove by it many times, but I really didn't know exactly where it was, and I turned on Cedar Mountain Road and went up and drove around, and then I came out and went out on the road. And I listened to everybody and listened to the concerns of, of the seller. And the property can be sold. The concern is rezoning it and selling it for this purpose. It can be sold now, as it is, and be sold for, you know, residential. And I've been real torn with this all day because I believe that, I'm kind of in between when it comes to a lot of things on zoning. I don't think you should tell anybody what they can do on their own property when it comes to their private residence, but this is being, wanting to be sold for, to generate income for the buyer, and I'm cool with that. But the, it is a very difficult site. If it was smaller, and you were doing neighborhood services close to the road, and a little farther up, and make it more safer, then that might be, be okay. And maybe when the six acres was involved, it was more like that. But for this full 10-acre site, the slope is a real issue there, and for that reason, I'm not going to be supporting it.
Yeah, Commissioner King?
These are always difficult decisions on zoning. We try to take into account everyone's needs, desires, and rights. But with right comes responsibility. And as I sit here, I think about the Great Wall of Fairview across the road and how badly that went. And I'm, in the absence of myself being a civil engineer or a geologist, I can't determine what the impact would be to this property if you started grading on it. Also, in the absence of knowing what project they would like to put there, since I don't believe there is one, it gives me great pause to vote for this. And so if I have to sit here and have the responsibility to make a decision on this, I'm going to err on the side of caution, and I won't be supporting this.
Okay, any other comments?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
I've lived in this area for 23 years. I pull out in that road every day. I live real close to Old Fort Road. I pull out, I make it. Yes, there's wrecks there, and there's people get killed, but there is on all roads. You know, if there's a way to make it safer up there with this property owner, if they move some of the property, they can actually move this road up the hill a little bit to make it better, if they can work something out with the state to, to make it work. But just saying that we cannot do something when we got a planning board that made a decision four to one that this, that this could be that way. Why do we have them? You know? Why do we have a planning board, then we go against them? I've been there more than one time. I've watched the signs go up. I lived there when it was a two-lane road. I watched them blow off the, all the rock off the mountain, and probably in the lady's house that is at the foot of the mountain there. But yes, there's been wrecks. There's a child killed, and it was toward the foot of the mountain. I travel it every single day. Don't want anybody killed on any roads. When they took the asphalt up and repaved, when it's regular asphalt compared to the asphalt that they had that the water ran off, that's bad. But we've all lived through, I lived through the two lanes. It was beautiful up the mountain. The trees laid across the road, and you couldn't get across the mountain hardly, period, in the wintertime because somebody would be against the guardrail trying to get up through there. We got a five-lane road. There's ways that lights can be put in, but there's ways that the people, oh, yes, there is. There's, they can put a light there, no different than they did down at Teblin and the curve down there, and you put a flashing light when it's, when it's going to be red. That's, that's why that was put in down at the other end down there. So I'm probably going to be by myself up here, but I'm for the property rights owner. That's where I'm at. As I said, we could have bought the property next to us. They put storage buildings. They put four apartments. There's trailers there. There's a little business out front. That little business, they sell tires. There's another one. More than one business. But you got to look at Old Fort Road. There's a stone place there. When you come out of it, yes, there was a terrible, bad wreck there here a while back. It's in a curve, too. But there's still a business around the corner of Old Fort Road. So telling somebody that this is exactly what they need to do, when they went before the boards, they've paid again, and the board decided four to one that this is what should be done, I have to go along with the board. And that's just the way it'll be on man. So, thank you.
Are any other comments? The only thing I'd add to it is I've lived out there for over 30 years, and I go by there every single day, twice a day. And it is one of the most dangerous places I know of in Buncombe County. All the arguments I heard today were the same ones I heard three years ago, and they all ring true. Everyone in Fairview community has an investment in what that community looks like, and every one of them has rights. I'm going to come down that we're going to, I'm going to vote to deny this because I don't think there's any doubt. There's no way you can make it safe, and I don't know how you pull out now from Cedar Mountain and some of the other places, but I certainly don't think we're going to aggravate the situation. So I'm very much against it. I was very much against it before, and I'm even more against it this time. Any other comments? Commissioner Newman?
Just a clarification of the process. So, because several people have said they're going to vote to deny this. A vote to deny it is to vote yes for the motion. Is that correct?
A vote to deny, a yes would be a vote to...
The motion is to deny, so we need, if you want to deny it, you need to vote yes for the motion. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. Any other comments? If not, we'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion to deny, which will mean we do not grant the variance that's requested by Mr. Rosenberg, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The motion to deny is, is passed. There will not be this development by a six-to-one vote, Frye, against. Thank you. And if people want to leave, we'll take a, maybe a 15-second break, and you can, the folks that came here for this, we've got some more business, but we'll take just maybe 10 seconds to let you get up and leave.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So ETJ's next?
Thanks for clarifying that.
I get confused.
I heard everyone saying, it's like, oh.
I get confused on that.
Okay, let's go and get started with the ETJ. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. We'll make this part of the record. Thank you. Madam Clerk, make that part of the record. Debbie Trumpy, let's talk about the ETJ.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Asheville's ETJ authority was removed by SL 2013-30.
Hey, you'll have to speak up, Dan. We can't hear you.
I'm sorry.
Pull the mic in.
SL 2013-30 was ratified in April 17 of this year. That took away the city of Asheville's authority to exercise land use regulations in their extraterritorial jurisdiction, which is, they're allowed to zone, were allowed to zone up to a mile outside their limits. The bill transfers authority to the county within 120 days, or when the county adopts zoning, whichever comes first. That 120 days will expire on August the 15th. If we could have the presentation, please. I have some maps that show the, the area that we're talking about. This is a countywide map, and the areas that are being transferred are outlined in red in this, this map. I would like to advance the slide, please. Zooming in a little bit closer, the ETJ areas are in violet, and the gray areas are the corporate limits of Asheville and of Woodfin showing there. Zooming in a little bit more, in these maps, the current county zoning is shown, but it's grayed out a little bit. We have it there just so you can see what would abut this area, but in the brighter colors is the, the ETJ zoning. In this northeast quadrant, we're looking at a little bit of area along Elk Mountain Scenic Highway up in the most northern area there, and then the Chuns Cove, Hall Creek, Blue Ridge Parkway area. The yellow, which is the predominant proposed zoning there, is R1, single-family residential. In the southeast area, this is Oakley, Blue Ridge Parkway area, the Ramble in Biltmore Park areas, Clayton Road, Leadbetter Road area. And here, R1, again, is shown in yellow. R2, multifamily residential, light green. R3, multifamily, is dark green. The employment districts that's proposed is shown in blue. Commercial service in red, and public service in purple. In the southwest quadrant, areas involved are Long Brevard Road, Pond Road, Sardison Road, and Sand Hill, the Biltmore Lake area, Smokey Park, and Liberty Road area. And then the northwestern area, Stars Cove, Cedar Hill, Johnson School Road, Ben Lippin, North Louisiana Avenue, and Gorman Bridge Road areas. We also, in addition to the zoning districts, would be applying our zoning overlays to this area. this area. We have three overlay districts that would be applied, the steep slope elevation, the protected ridge, and Blue Ridge Parkway. In the northeastern quadrant, again, the blue is the steep slope elevation overlay, brown is the protected ridge overlay, and then the dark purple is the Blue Ridge Parkway overlay. Then there are some areas shown in light purple that are both the protected ridge and Blue Ridge Parkway overlays, and then in green is both the steep slope elevation and Blue Ridge Parkway overlays. And then the southeast section, Blue Ridge Parkway, again, is dark purple, and then there's a little bit of protected ridge and Blue Ridge Parkway that's light purple, and steep slope elevation and Blue Ridge in green. And on the western half of the ETJ area, there are no overlays. This is the maps that we ran in our legal ads as well as sent to out-of-county landowners to notify about the proposed zoning. The planning board resolved to sponsor and initiate the map amendments at their May 6th meeting. In drafting the maps, staff looked at the current Asheville zoning, and we attempted to parallel what was the zoning that was already in place for these areas. But we did look at what was on the ground in an effort to not create non-conforming uses. We advertised the proposed zoning and zoning hearings. We ran half-page newspaper ads, mailed notices to out-of-county owners, posted signs throughout the ETJ area. We had 45 signs in prominent locations. We set up a webpage with frequently asked questions, put the maps on our GIS, and had contact information for planning staff. The planning board held a public hearing on the proposed zoning on June 17th. Seven people spoke during public comment. Six of them just had questions about how their individual properties might be affected but did not oppose the zoning. One speaker was concerned about what would happen with non-conforming uses. Our zoning ordinance is quite liberal as far as its approach to non-conforming uses. They can be continued, and they can be expanded. Also, after adoption of the zoning, we will provide a 90-day period where owners who are in that area can come and apply for rezoning with no fee.
How are they contacted, the owners?
The individual owners would not be contacted.
So, that they have 90 days to make any changes, how are they contacted to know that? Just through the, right now? Or no letters, no nothing?
No, we're not sending out any individual contacts, just with the information that's provided on our website and hearings.
Newspaper articles?
I'm sure there will be a newspaper article. At the planning board's public hearing, they found that the proposed zoning would be consistent with the land use plan, as the 2006 update recommends applying detailed zoning to the area that lies within the updated metropolitan sewerage district boundary, that is, the primary surface area. And the Asheville, and the area within the Asheville ETJ is within the MSD service area. The planning board found that the proposed zoning would be reasonable and in the public interest, as the property is not currently zoned by Buncombe County, and the authority to regulate development and land use has moved from the city of Asheville to Buncombe County. The planning board recommended in a unanimous vote to adopt these maps. Do you have any questions I could address at this time?
Any questions?
Debbie, did you say in your presentation, or is it any documentation, like how many parcels we're talking about?
I do not remember how many.
Ballpark, it hit within 100?
Thousands.
It's a little over 5,000 parcels.
And 20 miles, isn't it, Craig?
I don't recall.
That's what I was hearing today from Josh.
All right.
I would like to go back to the question I asked about the, their 90-day right to ask about, you know, their concerns on the zoning. I did speak to Josh today. I felt, was very comfortable with the efforts that, you know, the fairness and everything associated with this, but I would like to get a response back from staff on how they are going to contact, how they're going to let them know that they have the ability to appeal or have it changed or whatever. I don't expect, you know, to hear that, because from what I've heard, it's, you know, it's been done very well, but I would like to know how they do that, how they would be able to do that, whether we're going to let them know.
We can advertise it.
Okay. I mean, if it's advertising, or if it's a simple, you know, newspaper ad, or if it's whatever we should do.
I mean, I think you make a good point. I mean, 5,000 times, what's a stamp these days? So, I mean, it's a couple of thousand bucks, but it probably would be just good transparent government for property owners to know that there's a new sheriff in town, and, I mean, I know that we're going to benefit mightily from new permitting, so I feel like that would be revenue that would be recouped pretty quickly from permitting. So, I mean, that, I mean, I know advertising checks the box in a lot of ways, but sometimes I wonder if it's...
I like the letter.
Yeah.
Is it too late to include something with the tax bills?
I don't think that's on yet with the term.
I'm not, I don't think...
That's a great idea, if we could...
We can check. I think Gary's office is getting ready to send their stuff to the printers very, very soon, so I'm, it'd be very tight.
Kind of sorting it, right?
If they're not able to go in there, I would, since I heard some consensus from somebody on the board, I would recommend we send them a letter, and we show the colors and, you know, whatever, that they need to know that, hey, yours is yellow, or yours is green, and here's what it means, and, you know, I just think it'd be, it would be, speak well of our board and staff if we could be that transparent with this.
I mean, I do think, like, the ETJ has been this, I mean, there's a lot of layers around it, but one of the things that's maddening for property owners is, like, who's in charge? And you do this, and you do that. So, the good news is there's going to be clarity, so let's just begin with being straightforward and just say, this is who you go to from now on, and...
Welcome to Buncombe County.
Welcome to Buncombe County. We aim to please.
I also spoke with Josh O'Connor today as well in planning, and my question and concern was that we did not in any way negatively impact the businesses that are in the EJT. I wanted to make sure that, you know, our, the changeover, we were friendlier or as friendly, and one in particular was one in my area, is Vulcan Industries, which I was very much concerned about, that we don't negatively impact them. And so, I was assured that what we're doing is in line, and that if there is anything that's, that would create a problem, we could rectify that as this board could. So, that's my understanding.
So, can we make a recommendation to staff that they do that?
Yeah, I'll tell you what, let's go ahead and have the public hearing, then we'll do the motion, and I'll entertain an amendment to the motion if that's the will of the board. So, any other questions for Mr. Trumpy before we have public comment? All righty, then I have 5:47, we'll start our public comment. We will take three minutes from anybody, and if you have any material, we'll make that part of the record. Any folks want to be heard on the public hearing for the ETJ proposed amendments? Mr. Rice, anybody else? Yes, sir, in the orange shirt, if you'll have the, you'll have the first seat in the batter box, anybody else? All right, sir. Mr. Rice, you're first, and gentleman in the orange shirt will be second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm not too good in the batter box, but on this whole zoning thing, I'd like to remind this board, there are two of you sitting up there, that was here on the original zoning on the map, it got turned over by sending it to the court. And it was promised at that point in time that you all would go out into the county and have meetings at each middle school, and I come to the meeting, after you went to the municipalities, and the chairman threw me out of the meeting because I called him a bunch of liars. I'm talking about the board members at that time. Now, I'm reminding you of that because of what Mr. Belcher is saying. You're supposed to go out and notify people. You didn't do it, but you threw me out of the meeting for calling you on it. So, thank you, Mr. Belcher, for bringing this point up, and thank you, Ms. Jones, and thanking for supporting, giving additional information to people to make an informed decision. If you've been in the seat that I've been in, riding Buncombe County roads, the thousands of miles that I do a year, and mostly in Buncombe County, western North Carolina, the signs that they've put out is these red signs, they do not change them, and they've got a place that you write in, and somebody, I guess, goes along and wipes them off or something and puts another date in it or something because it's confusing, and it's been confusing even to me. And I've even questioned the planning board and the chair about this very situation, and even showed them a picture of a sign where I stopped in the car and took a picture and me setting the stop sign, and I couldn't even read it. Had to pull it up on my smartphone, or get out of the car and look for it, to see what the date was on it. So, I think you're right in notifying the people, and we did have this before, where Mr. Roberts would send out notifications before. We've done this in years past on other things, not just this. So, it's a great idea, and thank you, Joe, and y'all for supporting it.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Yes, sir.
I'm Wayne Marshall, and I live at One Honey Drive in Chuns Cove. My property is or was in the ETJ. I don't know. I don't know if that transfer has been finalized or not. I thought I could find Chuns Cove on a map, but the maps that were shown here, no, I have no idea where Chuns Cove is. And I do think, though, that for me to find out what is happening with ETJ, that if I have to turn on television news and find it out is a disgrace. The city or the county one, I feel, is mandatory that you contact the taxpayers and notify us as to what is going on, and have some more public hearings, maybe in a smaller grouping than we have tonight, and divide it up into districts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Any other public comment tonight on the ETJ proposed maps? If not, I'll declare the public hearing closed at 5:51. So, what's the pleasure of the board?
So, can I make a motion with an amendment?
You can.
So, how am I supposed, how do I need to phrase the first part of the, make a motion to support the rezoning, the ETJ, and that it's in accordance with our, am I supposed to have that?
How about a motion to approve the recommended map amendments, and add to that an amendment to notify each parcel owner either by, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. My opinion, it should be two motions, however it's panned out. Keep the motion to approve or deny clean, and then give direction to staff to follow up.
All right, good.
Very good. All right, so is there a motion to approve the recommended map amendments?
Make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The map, the approval of the map amendments has been approved, 7-0. Is there a motion concerning the notice to the individuals affected by this amendment?
Yes, I can make a motion that we instruct staff to notify each owner of property by letter with the proper description of what zoning their property would be under, and which properties, as we say, there's 5,000 properties, right, but there may not be 5,000 owners, so they may be affected by more than one, so I'd like to make that motion.
Okay, would a friendly amendment be that it could be by the tax or a separate mailing, or do you want just one mailing?
Send a mail or send a card would be probably more reasonable. I would say a separate mailing. I mean, if it can be... Yeah.
Okay.
Can you tie it into the tax bill? Can you get a time?
I'll just email to see what time it comes.
I mean, if you can do that, that's fine. As long as they get the, as long as they get a letter, I don't get... Whatever in the envelope, yeah.
Let's just say that, we leave it up to the discretion, but every parcel owner gets a notification within the 90 days that they have a no-fee time. Is that fair to say?
Yes, but let's say that they need to be notified within 30 days from today.
Okay. All right. Is that, okay, so the motion is to notify each parcel owner within 30 days of their right to exercise a 90-day period to have a rezoning and no fees?
Within 30 days of today.
Okay.
Question, do we need to separately vote to approve the fee waiver within the 90-day period as well?
No, that...
The staff are recommending that we have a fee waiver within 90 days. Do we need to vote on that?
I think that's included with what we're doing now. I mean, that's the recommendation to this board from the staff.
Okay, so we recommend...
It's not part of the ordinance.
Okay, so we recommended, we agreed that last vote?
Yes.
Okay, as long as everybody's clear on that, I think that's...
That was in the last vote, we did that.
Okay.
So, I want to be clear on the 30 days. We've given them 30 days from today. We're giving staff 30 days to contact them by mail.
And then the 90 days runs after the 31st day, is that what?
I mean, that gives them 60 days after that.
I guess as a point of clarification, if the motion is to give staff 30 days to give notice to all owners that you have 90 days from the date of the notice to have that appeal, then I think you should make that as a motion to clarify it all.
So, that basically pushes it 120 days out, right?
Yes.
Okay. That gives everybody maximum time. Is that agreeable, Ms. Newman, friendly amendment?
Sure.
Or clarifying amendment? Okay. Does everybody know where we're at? Okay, any other discussion?
I mean, I would, and I would use that opportunity, if there were some other important nuggets to include for, in kind of just informing the property owner of, you know, who the contact person is. So, this is an important issue, but there's probably a handful of other nuggets that we can include to just introduce them to Buncombe County Planning Department.
In terms of due to contact for ordinance enforcement and other related issues, not just how your property is going to be recommended for zoning?
Right.
Yeah, it is. It's a great opportunity to reach out, though, it really is.
Okay. Excellent. Any other discussion of the amendment as vetted out? All those in favor of the amendment proposed by Commissioner Belcher and seconded by Commissioner Newman, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The motion is adopted, 7-0.
Chairman, can I ask one quick question?
Yes, ma'am.
Just about, so, implementation. Are we needing to increase staff for, or we've got a plan to utilize the current staff for the increased demand, or what's the plan?
I think, in talking to the city, I think right now that we can handle that, so that's the plan, yeah.
Good. Any other questions or any other comments? If not, we'll go on to our next item, resolution approving INCA intermediate school site purchase price. And I'd also, I thought I saw Chairman Reinhardt, school board chairman...
Dr. Baldwin.
And Dr. Baldwin there. So, we all, who's going to, I guess Dr. Baldwin and Tim will do this one.
Chairman Reinhardt, I know I'm here to talk about the intermediate school property, but I've got to take 30 seconds and say thank you on behalf of our school system. First off, we're always appreciative of our local appropriations for our school operations, but I want to specifically thank our county manager and you, the commissioners, because what you allowed us to do, you gave us flexibility to redirect some of those funds. I think everyone's aware that our greatest hit from the state budget came upon our teacher assistance. It was about $2 million. Because we were able to redirect some of those funds... Because we were able to redirect some of those funds locally, it significantly reduced the impact, especially on our kindergarten through third-grade assistance. And you've heard me say this, beat this drum for five years now. We believe strongly in that foundation of K-3, importance of teachers and the support staff. And if you look at the legislation that came out, our General Assembly believed in that too. So, thank you for that allowance. You may recall, for the past three years, you have requested what I'm going to term as a long-range planning document over a 10-year span from Buncombe County schools. And it was our best crystal ball effort at identifying large projects that we had, that we anticipated over that span. And all three of those years, year... Three years where that was submitted, years one through five, included the purchase of property for an INCA intermediate school. And let me strongly emphasize that the property has to come first. We have to have the property before the building. Year six through 10 on all three of those plans included the building of that INCA intermediate school. And along with that particular long-range plan, on all the items included, we looked very carefully at our budget. We looked at our sales tax availability specifically from our Article 39. And so, we are here tonight to ask your approval to allow us to use a portion of current undesignated 39 sales tax funds for the property purchase. There is no question that this school will be needed. I can give you the ADM at INCA Middle School last year was 1,057. Just to give you a comparison, the next largest middle school last year was an enrollment of 828. Some of you may actually recall that this middle school used to be, was actually opened in 1955 as INCA High School. So, there is certainly a need. And I think you've heard a couple of INCA residents that have referenced crowdedness in the elementary school, and particularly two, that is Pisgah Elementary and Candler Elementary. And in both of those cases, we are projecting... We always do these projections, by the way, five-year projections for our board every spring. And both of those are projected to exceed what we consider to be functional capacity. And certainly, 1,057 students in that middle school environment exceeds what we consider to be functional capacity. So, with that, I want to turn this over to Mr. Tim Fairley, who is our facilities director. I also want to add, I've asked him to emphasize, anytime we look at any type of property purchase, I can assure you that we do a very comprehensive and thorough environmental study. And that has been done in this case. But I'm going to ask Mr. Fairley, as the director of this project, to share some specific details. But again, thank you for the flexibility, especially from our teacher assistants.
Mr. Fairley?
So, I have with me the due diligence studies that we conducted over the last six weeks. They're posted on the Board of Ed site, if you want to dig into them. They're easy reading at night. Good for insomnia, maybe. But we did assemble a very excellent team, a traffic engineering firm, very experienced in schools, a geotech firm, again, with excellent credentials and has worked for the Board of Ed in the past and performed well. We hired an appraiser to appraise the property and an environmental assessment. And we conducted interviews. We put an RFQ out, conducted interviews, and hired who we thought were the best, most qualified folks. And I think they came through in a five-week period and did really excellent work. We also hired a civil engineer to help me interpret some of these results and to put a kind of a napkin sketch study together of all the parts and pieces that it takes for a school to operate, the building, the parking lots, the playing fields. And our team of experts here analyzed those studies that we did, tweaked them, and we've come out with a kind of a schematic design that may or may not be what would ultimately be built. We have prototype schools that we just built, intermediate schools in the Coontz and Evelyn and the Irwin and the Roberson District. And we use that as the basic footprint of what we need because that seems to have worked very well. Folks like them, and it would promote equity. So, we do have a game plan. I can report to you that of all the reports in here, all the entities feel that this is an excellent site. We looked at numerous sites before we arrived at this site, at the former BASF plant. And we did that three years ago as well, when we were considering a INCA intermediate school. And at that time, we also came upon this site as the best site. Things have changed in a couple of years. Prices have gone up a bit. The economy is rebounding, but other pieces of property came onto the market that just weren't there. So, we had the opportunity to look at other properties. And in my opinion, and my recommendation to the board, is that this is the most suitable property for an intermediate school. I see we've got a PowerPoint up there, and I hope I can operate the remote to kind of give you a little feel for the site, just a couple of slides here, and we'll kind of zoom in as we go. But that red star is the site we're looking at. It's at the intersection of Sand Hill and Sardis Roads, very visible, very centrally located and easy to get to in the INCA district. And that's very important because every kid in the INCA district would have to go through this school, like a high school. We can't place it out in the corner or the perimeter or an inaccessible place because it really... It truly does serve the entire district. So, let me see if I probably had it upside down. There we go. So, we're zooming in on it, and you can see the yellow lines highlight the extents of the property. You can see... Is there a pointer on this? Yeah, okay. But it doesn't show up on the TV. I hope you can see the intersection of Sand Hill running to kind of the lower right and Sardis Roads that connects to the INCA district. We found some rock on the property. It's in that corner outlined in kind of a light blue there. It is not extensive, and with the game plan we had, I've asked our engineers to say, hey, if that rock wasn't there, how much more... How much is this going to cost us because of this rock? And it ends up being about $25,000, really not a whole lot of money. We wouldn't put the building right there. We would kind of work around that. We did find some construction debris from the building and the widening of Sardis Road there, and that's outlined in the red. And then here's the survey, and all those red dots you see are where we did soil borings. We looked at the character of the soil. We also took water samples in numerous sites there to test the groundwater. And there was no detect of volatile organic compounds or what you might expect. We also tested the Hominy Creek as it enters the property in the upper part of that slide and as it exits the property in the right side of that slide. And again, no detect of any concerns there. The property was primarily wooded for most of the last 30 years, but about 10 years ago, when this owner bought the property, they did take trees out and use some of the soil to fill other sites on that property to make it developable. So, there are some concerns, and my recommendation is to the board is that this owner stabilize the site, make sure that it's grassed, covered, and will not erode, and also remove that debris. But with just those two qualifications, my recommendation to the board, to the superintendent, will be that this is an excellent site for an intermediate school.
Any questions for Mr. Fairley?
How close is this to Sardis Road?
Pardon me?
How close is it to Sardis Road?
It... It doesn't quite border on it, but it's within a couple of hundred feet of Sardis.
We're talking perhaps the Coke... The Coke plant and stuff down in that area or...
The... That, I believe is...
That's on Sand Hill.
Is on, yeah, Sand Hill down the road. This is right at the corner where the two roads come together, but the property doesn't quite border on it. It borders on the Sand Hill side of it where Hominy Creek is. And then it borders on a private road, Jacob Home Way, that cuts through that INCA BASF plant.
One of the great things about this... One of the great things about this property, too, is that once a bridge comes across from 1923 and connects for industrial and retail or whatever else will go on over there, that will also be a way to connect to that school and it'll leave the traffic even more. So, it's just an amazing location.
There's also a proposed greenway that will connect to the property that will be accessible to the school and wrap all the way around and be an excellent resource for the school.
When was the property located? How long ago?
By located, could you clarify?
How long have you been thinking about this land?
Well, we looked about three years ago. The board said, let's look at this. And I did. I did a property search, had a real estate entity involved, and searched myself and found numerous properties. Came upon this property, but because of the economy and a number of other things, the board shelved the search. So, reinvigorated that search about two months ago or so and found new properties available. Some of the same properties were out there. And identified this property last month as the one that we should probably look at and do these due diligence studies.
So, nothing's been precipitous about this, is my point.
It's been... I mean, before that three-year search, the INCA intermediate school was discussed maybe five years ago and put as kind of number three. The two other schools were built, but the commitment was that when population growth proved out, that INCA intermediate would be the next in line.
That's great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I think I do this every time Dr. Baldwin comes. We get a report from Chairman Reinhardt or Dr. Baldwin. I really appreciate your plan. You're very methodical about how you decide on schools. You look at all the factors. You have a wonderful checklist and priority about how... What weight you give, the need for schools. And I've always been real impressed with that, and I think I do bring it up about every time. But thank you for doing that because it takes a lot of the subjectivity out of it because if you've got the numbers, you've got all the different criteria met, then it's a real easy decision. The question is the funding, and that's our part of the process. But I just want to commend both of you for following that. And I've watched it a long time, and I appreciate it every time because a lot of agencies don't do that. So, that's my two cents this time. Thank you. Any other comments or... Okay. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I've got some. I want to make a couple of comments. I want to thank membership of the School Board and Mr. Farrell and Dr. Baldwin and others. David King and I had an opportunity to go and visit the middle school. And just for the record, both of my children went to the middle school, and I'm very familiar with the traffic on Asbury Road. I did see the reports. I personally was convinced that the plan to put a sixth-grade academy on the back of that would be nothing more than a $9 million modular. It would not be the ultimate fix. Certainly, you can push things out, but it's time for INCA Candler to have a school like this. It's an amazing location. I mean, you could not have... You couldn't have prayed down a better spot, as far as I'm concerned. I do understand the concerns about BASF and things, and I'm confident that... I'll tell you how confident I am in that the proper due diligence has been done and will be done, is my grandson's going to that school. And so, that's got me charged up, too. But I'm excited about it. It's a great location, and I look forward to supporting this. And we don't want to forget that somebody's going to explain Article 39, that we're actually... This money's not coming from our general fund. It's actually coming from Article 39 money. But what a... For me, a historic day for me to be able to participate in this. And I'm honored in the professionalism and the way it was handled, the thoroughness that is handled now and the continued thoroughness. And I hope that it will be carried out expeditiously because my grandson's seven, so...
Do the math.
I would also like to comment earlier, and even the assertion was made that this was a top-down decision and that we would rubber stamp this. Well, I'd like to refute that statement. I'd like to say that members of the community, Michelle Pace Wood, Lynn Miller, the Suttons, have contacted us. I have bothered Chairman Reinhardt many, many days on the phone. This board's been actively engaged in this process. We have known from the beginning as this board what's going on, and I'd like to assert that we all met in the middle, the community, this board, and the School Board. Thank you.
And also, the property owners moved on the price, and you don't see that a lot. And so, that was great. Saved us a quarter of a million dollars on the property. The paper says it's $2 million. It's not $2 million. It's 1.98, which is less.
Any other comments?
I just... I agree. It is a great location for a new public school, so it's a really exciting project, and it's great to see this step being taken forward. It is a... It's going to be a great asset for this whole part of the community for years to come. So, it's very exciting to see it forward.
Before we do the motion, why don't we... Dr. Baldwin, could you talk a little bit about Chapter 39 and how that works? Some of the folks in the audience and possibly the public don't really understand that and how this is going to be financed.
There are certainly better individuals to talk about the history, and I think to do it justice, that we would need to talk about the history. So, I'll do my best.
Okay. Maybe Ms. Clark there can help, but I think she was prompted to do that earlier.
Dr. would certainly be much, much better. So, you can tag team with me. I can tell you from the standpoint of Superintendent of Buncombe County Schools, Article 39 is a specific sales tax dedicated to Buncombe County. Asheville City also receives per ADM a portion of that.
What is just... ADM is average daily?
Average day... I'm sorry, average daily membership. Think in terms of the number of students in each system. But it is unique. It is unique in this state. I can find only one school system that I believe has had something similar to this. This goes back years and years ago, when Buncombe County was identified nationally as what they call... I've heard this over and over, the story of the Dirty Dozen. Nationally, we were identified as having some of the worst school buildings in the country. As a result, community members, politicians, local politicians, I would be amiss if I didn't identify, one, is Senator Martin Nesbit, key players here in Buncombe County, decided it was time to do something about that. And as a result, they worked through the General Assembly, and therefore, Article 39, which we call Article 39, became the sales tax specific to Buncombe County, and it was clearly restricted to capital school building use. And as I say, that has, in my opinion, that has allowed Buncombe County schools to be second to none in the state of North Carolina relative to our facilities. There was reference earlier about legislation, again, and I want to thank our local legislators, that now has given us local flexibility to use a portion of sales tax to technology. Well, I won't invite you all to Thursday's board meeting, but here's what I do need to tell you is different. Initially, the... to, to tell you is different. Initially, the, the bill that came through the House identified Article 39 funds, which again, as I said, was restricted to capital use, to give us flexibility for those undesignated funds to be used for technology. Uh, in the process of it becoming a, in the final budget, that shifted to lottery funds. Um, again, we're very fortunate in that we have undesignated lottery funds. Part of that is now designated to our STEM high school. There is a portion remaining that we are now, because of this new legislation, we are going to be able to dedicate five million dollars over the next two years for technology, for digital learning, infrastructure, potential digital devices. And our technology director is just, uh, biting at the bits to be in front of the board on Thursday to talk about what tentatively that might look like. But that's flexibility that came out of lottery. We would have not had that flexibility with lottery funds had it not been for having this unique sales tax in Article 39. So I've probably, uh, done a terrible job of, of giving you the perspective, but, uh, from my standpoint, I know it's a very, very good thing for Buncombe County schools. Donna, anything you would add or?
I have a mouth and all of that, but you really stand my thunder.
Good. Good. Thank you. Thank you both. Okay. Any other discussion of the, um, intermediate school, uh, proposal to buy this site we have heard about? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Been a motion by Commissioner Frost, a second by Commissioner King. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The motion passes to buy the ANCA property 7-0. Thank you. And again, well, if anyone, we're going to continue on, but if anyone needs to leave, we will certainly give you that opportunity. Next up, we have, um, the ordinance creating the Buncombe County Cultural and Recreation Authority. Dr. Green.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I feel like every time I've stood here through the last two months, I've talked about House Bill 418 and the Culture and Recreation Authority. So, and in our last meeting, you did authorize the Culture and Recreation Authority. And tonight, we're bringing you the ordinance that creates the authority. Some of the highlights in the ordinance, uh, are, and about the Culture and Recreation Authority is that it creates a new government, it's a, with a seven-member board. Do want to tell you that we have already combined library, recreations and culture into one department, which was just a good business model and it also facilitates the transition as, as we move forward. The offices for this, uh, the new administration is located on the upper level of PAC Library. We're able to repurpose some space there. So they've all moved. Um, Ed Sherry, who's the library director, is managing the transition and working very closely with Fran Thigpen, who's our Parks, Greenways and Recreation Director. And they're both working closely with staff and with their boards as we prepare for the transition and, and gather all the questions that need to be answered. I do want to emphasize that these programs and these expenditures have for a long time been part of, of county budget. These are not new expenditures that we're, we're creating a, a new tax to cover. These have long, for a very long time, been part of county government. Uh, however, moving forward, we will manage them a different way under this new unit of government. The, um, the, the county commissioners will be creating the Culture and Recreation Authority. So there'll always be a tie between the two boards. However, moving forward, there has to be an arms-length agreement and relationship between the two boards, which I think will be one of our bigger challenges to lay out which board is doing, uh, has what responsibilities going forward. Um, there are some administrative timing issues that we need to work with as we move forward. We, we have to have the CRA board set up. It has to have a meeting and we can, whatever the number, the first number of appointees are, as long as there's a majority of them there, we have to select a chairman. In order to sign the documents that have to go to the State Department of Revenue for retirement and, um, 401K, other benefits that would be eligible to a government employee, we have to have those signed and in the Department of Revenue's hands. Once those are approved by the Department of Revenue, we can actually stand the organization up on the first day of the following quarter. So there's some real serious timing issues as we move forward here. Uh, so when you do approve the ordinance, I will ask you that you go ahead and appoint whatever members you're going to appoint who will be commissioners. It does require at least one commissioner to be on this board. And then, uh, I think it's prudent to advertise for the remaining positions. Um, Ms. Thigpen has worked really closely with the Parks, Greenways and, uh, Greenways and Recreation Board, uh, to make sure that they're informed and as Ed Sherry has worked with the library board, we want to make sure that they know everything we know and that they're, they're preparing and helping us prepare for the transition. We've wanted their feedback. They've been good to give us their feedback and share the worries that, that you might have amongst staff or, uh, the board either one. We are asking you with this ordinance to transfer the Parks, Greenways and Recreation Board. It's an advisory board to transfer that to the Culture and Recreation Board. That's a fairly easy transition. Uh, it keeps the, the members intact and it just changes which board they're advising. And since this commissioner, this commission will not have the responsibility for libraries and, um, recreation directly, they need to be advising the Culture and Recreation Authority. The library board's just a little bit different animal in, it's a statutory board. And, but we still have the need for the advice on library operations to, it, it needs to be directed to the library, uh, the Culture and Recreation Board. So we're asking you to, and I'd like to suggest an amendment on Section 10 of the ordinance that you have in front of you, um, so that we can address the transfer of these two boards. Um, if you look at the end of the first sentence, when it says, uh, um, the committees are hereby disbanded, I'd like to add, and the respective members of these boards are transferred to the authority board as an, as advisory committees. The disbanding language is to clarify the relationship between the library board and the Board of County Commissioners. And then the transferring it is to say to the Culture and Recreation Authority, we want you to have these advisory boards. They, they spend a lot of time with us. They've done a lot of things for the county. They've been great counsel to us, developed a lot of plans, whether it's the sports park master plan, the Lake Julian master plan, the Greenways, uh, master plan. They've spent a lot of time and have a lot of history. That will be very valuable to the CRA. Um, and I, I know how grateful each of you are to not just the existing board members, but the ones that have gone before them because they've laid a great foundation to move us forward with the, with the Recreation Authority. Um, there is a lot of work that has to be done and we want that work to be done in a way that's not disruptive to, to our citizens. So we don't want patrons to be, use our service and feel any sense of disruption or change. They, they should not feel, uh, see a difference in terms of how it's run and the services that are provided. We want to be very, uh, open and, and honest with our patrons as they come through, make sure they know what's happening, uh, and who, who's responsible. This commission will still have to set the tax rate to fund the Culture and Recreation Authority. Today, we set tax rates to fund, uh, city school supplemental tax, fire districts. Both of those were established by, by voters. This authority is being established by the commission. It's, it's a little bit different, uh, in, in its origin. So we want to make sure people really do understand how that's, uh, how we're constructing it, what it will do. And as we can grow the information, we, Kathy is setting up a, a link on the, on the website and we are putting some information in the tax bill so we can take people to that, uh, to that site. And we want to keep it as current as we can. So depending on what we do tonight, we're able then to, tomorrow, add to that and, and give them a better status. So tonight, what I'm going to ask you to do, I'm, uh, making the request that you create the Culture and Recreation Authority with this ordinance. And if you do create it, I will ask that you go ahead and appoint, um, the commissioner or commissioners, uh, that are going to be on the Culture and Recreation Authority. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. It, it's a tedious piece of legislation in a lot of ways and the ordinance is just a reflection of, of the requirements in the, in the bill itself.
Okay. I've, I've got a question. Wanda, what, there's, there's some tight timelines you've discussed here.
Yes, sir.
How will the employees for the library and recreation departments, even if they're merged now, will they just be, until we set all this up, will they just be paid as county employees?
Actually, our expectation and what we're planning to make this a smooth transition is that, that they continue to be part of the county until the, this Culture and Recreation Board is up and running. And we anticipate it might be as, uh, the earliest you'll really make the transition with employees is July 1st of next year. We want to give them options and, and we want them to feel comfortable about their, uh, their employment and their security.
Well, I think, I think that's a very, very important part of this board's concern is that each employee of the CRA gets the same benefits, the same salary. It's not a job cutting or a job, uh, demotion. It is the same or more is what I'd like to see. And I think this board has expressed strong opinion that nobody has a cut in any benefits. If anything, we, we do more, but we definitely, this is not a demotion. This is, this is just a different entity that nobody in this state has ever done is what, what we hear.
This is an entirely separate unit of government. We've heard that, um, that feedback and as we prepare and bring policies to both the Culture and Recreation Board and then as they will have to be approved by the commissioners, we, we are following that guidance.
Okay.
So my questions have to do, I guess, around both the, um, okay, first let's just talk about the initial board.
Yes, ma'am.
So, and I hear that we need an official board so we can sign the documents, so we can get rolling and there's, there's, there's timelines to meet. So I guess my question is, and so I want to hold in balance the fact that because this is a new board, a very important, making a lot of important decisions, I, I do want us to kind of announce it to the communities, you know, receive applications, us do our due diligence to select those people. But I, I hear some of this urgency to get some of the, the mechanics done. So is there a way to kind of have, uh, a, a partial board started that we could, we, and we could do that, i.e. the, I know there's several folks on this board that have expressed interest. So we could kind of start with like a founding board and then as quick, as, not as quickly as possible, but with, with all deliberate speed of intentionality that we bring the other people on, uh, but we are able to really?
The way it reads is, um, it can take action with the majority of the, of the members who are appointed. And I do think it's prudent to advertise for the positions that are not filled by commissioners. But I think there's going to be a lot of interest in the community.
So if we had initially four board members from the-
Go ahead with your question. I'm, thank you.
So if we, if we, this is just an idea. It might not work according, or we might have to modify it based on this idea. But if we started with four appointees from this board, that would be the majority, that would be a majority.
That would be, well, that'd be a majority of this board too. So it, how we have to notice-
Had a problem?
I, I, I think it is a problem, uh, to have a majority of this board be, be the majority of, of that board in terms of how you notice and who's really making the decisions. It's not clear then it's just-
This would be a public board anyway. We, I mean, we would notice it regardless.
We would, but we also have to notice that the, the majority of the Board of Commissioners are in session in addition to the Culture and Recreation Authority being in session.
So, but if we have to have a majority of the board appointed for it to begin operating?
No, we just have, have to have, um, however many you appoint, we just need a majority of those appointees to be able to meet.
So if we appointed-
Three.
Three, they could meet and they could take some initial actions of things that need to be done.
Oh, okay.
With respect to everybody.
And we can do it with, with three, uh, if you'd like. That would be, um, we just need to have the first meeting of that board at, at whatever level you appoint it so that we can get a chairman appointed and some documents signed. We, nobody has the authority but the person who's, uh, chosen as chair of the CRA.
And the, Mr. Chairman and the, and Dr. Green, I'm reading it slightly different, but I think there's, there's a, there's a middle way to fix it because the legislation and the ordinance both say that, uh, the board, the authority board shall consist of seven members. A quorum is a majority of the board and action by the board would take a majority of that. So three of four. If, if, uh, three members of this board and pick four random people are required to have a quorum just for the, for whoever an interim chairman is, uh, to sign the documents necessary to get the retirement system funding in place, then the ordinance also allows that, uh, any member can be removed by this board at any time. So it could be an interim board in that respect, but I think it would require seven appointments.
I have a question about housekeeping. Should we vote on the CRA first because if it's not a 7-0 vote, then we can't decide any of this right now anyway. Is that correct?
That's correct. Wait, uh, an ordinance only passes first rate of 7-0.
So we need to figure this out, but we need to figure the other thing first. So I, I guess my second round of question has to do with this, um, the whole boards and commission piece. And, um, so if I've understood correctly, so we've got three different alternatives here. Um, is the, is the first one, the one that's currently in the, of this, first one is currently what is published?
The draft that was presented to the board says, "are hereby disbanded, period." That's what's in the packet material before you.
Okay. So these are three new alternatives.
Correct.
Okay. So what you're saying is, so we, which one did you refer to when you were making your presentation?
I referred to the second one where it makes it clear that the advisory board will continue in, in a role with, uh, with the CRA.
So the, the alternative two would mean that we would still, uh, have, that, that these boards would still exist in our community to advise and serve, uh, but it would just serve a different body. It would serve the authority and not the commissioners.
That's right. And it would serve an advisory capacity for both.
They would still be there. That would be alternative two.
That's right.
So, so we have to say the word disbanded, but it's really not as bad as it sounds.
It's not as bad as it sounds. It's just we have to comply with the statutes and, and kind of sever the relationship between the Board of Commissioners and the library board.
I got you. I got you. Okay.
And, and they would function as advisory committees?
Mm-hmm. They would.
And do they, did they, can I ask one question?
Yes, ma'am.
Do they, does the, does the future authority have, they will appoint them from hereforth?
They will.
Okay.
And I think it's critical that we have the feedback of the existing boards. It's not even a close call in my mind. And I think the other one, I think I've talked to everybody, most of you anyway, about, about this. We, we've got to have their collective wisdom in what they're doing now so we could go forward with what we want to do and, and have the best, um, CRA we, in, possible. So.
And they have a lot of history with our departments today. So it's very helpful.
And also for the continuity of the employees and their stability as well.
Mm-hmm. Good point.
All right. So am I correct from my, my conversation with Mr. Fruit earlier that the only part of the ordinance that we are about to adopt that is different than the, the state statute is this, this, what we're discussing right now, the current boards and commission content? Other, other than that, the, the ordinance has been developed strictly based on the, the adopted legislation?
As we discussed, that, that Section 10 is the only thing that varies, uh, from the legislation. I did clarify some meaning, tried to make it flow better and, and cleaned up membership just a little bit, but-
Right.
That's the only thing that's new.
That's, that's the new thing. Okay.
Because there's going to be a different relationship with the library board anyway, no matter what we do. Because this is a new statutory addition to the, what was there before.
Absolutely.
By us adopting this. So I, yeah, I think it's, I think it's going to be different no matter what we do. Okay. Is there a motion or is there any other discussion first and we'll ask if there's a motion to adopt, uh, let's first take a motion to adopt the ordinance with any amendments and then we'll talk about the membership.
Question?
Yes, sir.
On the vote on this, tonight, does it need a 7-0 vote to, uh, pass it where it don't have to go to the, two weeks from now?
Yes, sir. This is the, uh, meeting in which this ordinance is first introduced. So it would require a unanimous vote to pass today.
In the first, in the first setting?
Yes, in the first setting. Otherwise, it'd need to come back for a majority of the-
It has to go, go to the next meeting.
Yes.
That, that's my question.
And I can kind of follow up on that one. If, if, um, if there is a, a second vote on the 27th, which is our next meeting, not the 20th as we normally have, would that make it, is there a possibility we could get started before the fourth quarter if that was the case?
It'll just depend a lot on, uh, whether or not the Department of Revenue gets us papers back to us approved in the month of September. back to us approved in the month of September. We have everything ready to go. We just need a person who can sign the documents, and we'll get them off to them right away. If they get them back to us in September, we're good to go on October 1st.
And that kind of goes to the second point, to have a signing authority to get that going, right?
And I think that...
With the minority if we appoint them tonight.
Chairman?
Sir?
One more question. We was talking about salaries and different things. How did this work with the Health Department, Manny Jones, when you did that? That's another area that I'd like to have and understand him, because he don't, I don't.
And actually, I think the biggest difference there is we contracted with a nonprofit to provide a service. Here, you are actually creating a government, and I think that that's a big differentiation. And so we did have over 100 employees move to Manny Jones, and we did make sure that they had retirement and benefits when they moved.
But on the benefits, like we're talking here, how did the benefits go with our employees to the nonprofit, Manny Jones?
They did not retain our benefit package. They had a benefit package at Manny Jones.
I'm going to make a motion, but...
But I want to reiterate, we're keeping everything the same.
We have heard that real loud and clear as we prepare the documents, yes.
So in terms of creating the, this authority, I'd be happy to make a motion to adopt the ordinance that is, has been printed with the alternative to, to the language of Section 10 that would read, I probably should read this out loud because it's not, it's not in anybody's packet. So in addition to the, not in addition, instead of the current Section 10 that is printed, it would be current boards and committees, the Board of Trustees of the Ashville-Bunkham Library System, established by Bunkham County Resolution Number 17075, and is amended by, I mean, Bunkham County Resolution Number 17093, as well as the Parks, Greenway, and Recreation Services Advisory Committee are hereby disbanded, and the respective members of these boards are transferred to the Authority Board as advisory committees. It is the intent of this Board of Commissioners to relinquish any formal authority it has over these boards and leave future decisions regarding the efficacy of advisory panels regarding libraries, parks, greenways, recreation facilities, or cultural organizations to the Authority Board. That's a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, there's been a motion by Vice Chair Jones, a second, with the amended provisions that Vice Chair has read. Is there any discussion?
One thing.
Yes, sir.
I voted against the whole budget, and if I voted no tonight, it's going to bring it all the way up to the 27th, and I'm not going to push that issue that far. So I will be voting with you.
Thank you.
That's great.
I think the bottom line is it's going to make things better, and I think we just, it's going to take a lot of work, but I think we have an opportunity to do something that's groundbreaking and better for employees, better for our libraries, better for our parks and reg. So I likewise support it. Any other comments? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The motion as amended is adopted 7-0.
My next request would be, would you appoint from the commission, the board, the members that you will have on CRA?
I'd like to make a motion that Chairman Gant is the chairman of this.
Say again, please.
I'd like to make a motion that Chairman Gant is also the chair of the CRA.
Second. Be glad to serve. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
You didn't oppose, no?
Look, as a point of order, can we do that?
I'd have to defer the attorney on that.
This is a new government entity. Isn't it their board's choice as to do it?
I just pulled up the session law, and you're correct, this board cannot do that. The CRA board has to appoint its own chair and vice chair.
Okay, oh... And I'm just trying to figure out these mechanics, just for the short run. So like, what you're saying is if we have a board, we can sign the documents and we can go, right?
That's right.
So for just that mechanics, can't we just appoint this entire board for a short period of time while we, and then do that business, and then we advertise to the public the other openings, and then we will knock some people off of this board and then bring others on? I mean, it's a little awkward, but if it facilitates the business getting done, is that another way to do it?
Commissioner Jones, I believe you can, because the session law also says nothing in this act shall prohibit the appointment of only elected officials to the Authority, so it would just be the somewhat cumbersome double notice provision to have this board get together to appoint a chair and vice chair and get the documents signed, but it's doable.
But couldn't we just, like, the next meeting we have, adjourn and then re-adjourn, restart, and then prove that, and then move on and...
It just require the notice, but yes.
But we could notice it with the others' meeting.
Mr. Frost?
Would it be more expedient if we were doing it with that thought in mind, to have Dr. Green and Assistant County Manager Creighton on the board, and then that way we can have a more thoughtful process, and then that way there's more continuity, there's no double notice of...
Do we want to set a time limit? That's the one thing, of all seven of us.
I think that'd be part of the motion.
I mean, I, this is, okay, this is Holly's land, but that we do this just to get the paperwork going, but we simultaneously put the advertisement out, and this board doesn't do any other business except for get the paperwork rolling, sign those documents, and we interview and select our people, and really, the first time that the board meets is the seven that we want to start, that's when all the work happens. We don't try to start, you know, developing policies or even doing research. We just, we wait till that whole board is set, that this would just be almost a one-time thing.
I think you could do that with one meeting.
And we do it, I mean, for that matter, I mean, we can do it tonight. I mean, we could, right?
I don't know that you're noticed in, that you're in session as a CRA.
Yeah, there's a separate session requiring the usual seven days notice to 48 hours for a special meeting, so it had to be at least 48 hours.
But you see what my point is. I'm not trying to start, do business of the broader board. In fact, I think that would be kind of weird. I wouldn't want us to do it, and I also wouldn't want to start out with staff, either. I really want the community involved, but I also want to move forward with our employees, being able to get their retirement, and so it's, that's the thinking on that.
My thought in mentioning the staff is not so much notice, you know, is it a different amount of notice if it's just...
No, no, it'd be the same thing. If the CRA board were appointed, all seven of them, seven of them today, and wanted to have a quick meeting, we'd have to have time to have at least 48 hours notice to have a special meeting for the purposes of signing them up. If, even if that was three members of this board and four members of the public, that same notice would be required.
But what if there was just three?
You still have to have the notice.
Yes.
Okay. So if we, if we did that, if we had that meeting, if we noticed it for the meeting that we're already going to have the 27th, and we did that, does that get the ball rolling for what you need to do?
It does. It's basically a three-week delay in signing the documents, and that's the hard thing. I don't know if everybody's available to notice a meeting in the morning for a special call, just for signatures. That's the only thing that's going to roll it fast enough for us to be sure we're able to operate on October 1st.
So when do you need it by the...
I always hope, well, we need the documents signed right away to give Department of Revenue as much time as they need, so we can stay after them and get it done by October 1st.
So if we were to notice a meeting tomorrow morning?
Can we do a special call meeting, notice in the morning for 48 hours?
I think that hits Monday.
Friday morning.
Would it make us Friday?
Friday morning.
It would have to be, yes, Friday.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
And would it be, could I ask the other members of the commission to indicate who may be interested in serving on the board on a more kind of ongoing basis, just to kind of get a sense of, like, who would be potentially interested in that, and kind of get a sense of...
Get a sense of that.
I would be.
Okay, Mr. Frost?
Yeah, I have been, from the beginning, very vocal that I would like to be part of it, so.
Vice Chair Jones and Chairman Gant, gentlemen, I think we've got enough on their plate. So we have four people that are interested. I kind of think, I think I would support, so we can get the ball going, appoint us all right now and understand. I think that the way I vision this, ladies and gentlemen, is to have members of the Library Board, of the Parks and Recreation Board, and some folks possibly to help us with putting this and getting the message out of what we're doing and how we're doing it. And I think we would need to be very careful in the, any other people we appointed. It won't be the same seven that we started with if we did this. I think that's what I would support. It's just, let's appoint us, let's get the paperwork signed. We can, I would, if we can meet, I would suggest maybe Friday afternoon, if it'd be better for folks.
This Friday afternoon?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we'd need a quorum, so all we'd need is four, I guess, of that, right? Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
So if folks had conflicts, we wouldn't necessarily have to, I think we'd, what, appoint a chair and designate the chair to sign the paperwork to get the employee paperwork going, so that they could make sure they were covered.
Exactly, yes.
And that's the only business we need to have conducted.
So it would be a short meeting, I don't think it would be...
And you're, so you're only going to have four people at that meeting?
Well, we could have...
You can have anybody, but if for some reason people couldn't show up, we'd only need to have to have four.
Given the notice, yeah, if we could do maybe...
But if you're appointing the four commissioners, does that not constitute a quorum for the seven that was going to be on there anyhow?
Yeah, we have to do a double notice, but that's...
But what I'm saying is that only those four commissioners have to be at the meeting.
Right. If people had conflicts, we'd notice it for both the commissioners, because we have more than four commissioners, and the CRA, which is a public entity, and either one would have, four would work. We could get business done if folks had conflicts, because I know it's not much notice.
So I'm a little bit confused. So tonight, the purpose of appointing four is so that we can have that CRA board meet.
And I hear that we would appoint all seven.
Yeah, I think we're going to do all four, all seven.
Yeah, we'll have one meeting as a group, and then we also would want to, I think, have the time for advertising. I would suggest we do that right away.
Yeah.
Just advertise for the folks that aren't going to be on this board, that are going to be on the CRA, and instruct, let's get that full blast now. And then I think another decision we might want to talk about is whether we want to interview the folks that are not going to be commissioners before our next meeting.
I just don't say we're going to have enough time to get good pool of candidates to do that, so...
Not Friday, but the next, the 27th.
Even that's only three weeks.
That's only three weeks, yeah.
I really do think you're going to pitch in September.
Okay, okay.
I mean, we get through the craziness thing by doing this other, so I think, I think if we get the other group in into September, we're in good shape with other stuff.
That's true. The big, the timeliness is to get the signatures.
That's right.
And once we do that, we can appoint the other. Okay, I agree, okay.
And if we could, if we do this, if we do this approach, I think it, I think this makes sense, but just making sure we're not doing anything inconsistent with what we just voted on. The, because the ordinance does talk about specific lengths of terms and things like that, so in a way, we're kind of doing something a little different here, and that this is kind of an interim process, and then we're going to appoint these folks who actually will serve out these three, you know, these different lengths of terms. Am I understanding, am I thinking about that right?
It is something of a mixed bag, but yes, the, they're specific three-year terms, but we included language that, if I can find it, oh, I'm looking at the, something different. But there is a language that, in terms of membership, that members can be removed at any time by this Board of Commissioners and reappointed, no reason is needed to be given. So it's on that basis, I'm thinking it's interim and it gets changed.
Mr. Frue, it's 4C, any member of the Authority Board may be removed by the Board of Commissioners by a majority vote, a quorum being present. No calls for removal shall be required.
Okay, so it sounds like we can do it.
Right.
Although obviously, that kind of sounds sort of harsh, but it'd be understanding that this is...
There's another thing...
Really an interim board for this purpose.
There's another thing in this.
This won't be used on campaign materials in the future.
Mr. Frue?
Mr. Gant's the chairman, and we're looking for four, so let's take one from the three districts. If it's Joe or District 3, Ellen, I'm fine with you taking it from District 2. Let's have three districts, and the one chairman, four, right now, and see what happens. That's the way I look at it, because I'm fine with Ellen taking it, and I think you're fine with Joe taking it, aren't you, David?
I mean, I think we're talking about, like, in the future, and I tend to, I tend to agree that noticing is not going to be a big deal. I mean, it's just, so if four, if four members of this board are really interested in it, I don't see any, I mean, I'm trying to figure out what the problem is if we notice, if we've got to notice one, we can notice the other one, so.
I would say, I would still, I think I'd go with seven, and then that'll give us the maximum flexibility to send the people.
Oh, no, no, at the beginning, but I mean, but going forward, in terms of, just to kind of, yeah, start with seven, start with seven, start with seven.
Maybe I could ask, is there a way that we could say we'll appoint the seven as an interim board until October 31st or something, so that there's not the question about coming back and, quote, removing anyone?
I think we, I don't know that we state that as an absolute, but that this is with the intent that at least three members of the initial board shall resign or be reappointed by that date.
But there's nothing, I mean, because there is the legislative authorization, I want to make sure we're not voting for something that is inconsistent with the enabling legislation, because if the enabling legislation does sort of set forth these specific terms, and then we kind of vote for something that's different terms, then, I just don't want there to, whatever this board votes to create, I don't want there to be a legal question mark about the validity of it.
Three, three, two, two, one, one, one. I mean, would that, would that be consistent with the legislation if we, in addition to appointing the seven of us, we also assign terms to us all?
I think so.
My only worry is that we're leaving, I'm still in favor of three commissioners and four people from the community, because we need that input, we need that expertise. As I see it, we need strong leadership from libraries, greenways, parks, and I think by talking about terms, and I'm more in favor of, you know, once we get the paperwork done, then go about hearing from the people in the community that want to be on it, and then, as Browning said, they get kicked off the island.
Kicked off the island.
Rather than saying terms right now.
And there's...
Because the terms do seem contrary to what...
Well, there's always the other way to look at it. I think that there could always be a gentleman's agreement that three or more members of this board appointed to the original CRA board will agree to resign, and then, you know, what else, what choice do you have but to appoint someone new? And then this board wouldn't be taking action that may be viewed as contrary to the legislation.
I'm fine with that, too, and that, but I really agree with what Ellen said. I mean, I'm happy that there's four people who want to serve on it, but I think what is the right number of elected officials versus community is a really good question. Whether we want it to be a majority of elected officials versus community, I think, is something we should give some thought, too. So I'm happy to move down the path of having this meeting, everyone's on there, as long as, we don't close the doors on kind of having continued discussion about the right mix going forward, once we have time to really give some more discussion to that question.
Nobody can ever say we don't discuss.
You know, my original thought on this, too, was that if it was going to be seven, I was hoping it would be a few more, but if this was only going to be seven, that it would probably not be in the best interest of the CRA, the community, to have four seating commissioners on that board. That you'd want the majority to come from the community and still have the stability of the three commissioners that would serve, so.
Well, I tend to agree. Let me just ask this. Legally, can we appoint on an interim basis and not get in terms, or would you recommend that we do terms? Because I, we can go ahead and do it either way.
I think the only way to be bulletproof right off the bat is to do what Holly suggested, and appoint, yes, one-year, one-year, two-year, two-year, three, three, three. But, again, I mean, I don't, I don't think that, I wouldn't recommend saying that it's going to be an interim board, because the legislation doesn't specifically provide for an interim board.
Okay, I'd make a motion that we appoint Commissioner Frost, Commissioner Belcher, and Commissioner Gant to three-year terms. We appoint Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Newman to a two-year term, and Commissioner Bel, beginning 14, and Commissioner Fryer and Commissioner King to a two-year term. beginning 14, and Commissioner Fryer and Commissioner King to a two-year term beginning, oh, it says beginning, though. So that's a problem.
That's when the, the terms run, we, we, that was tough language for Holly to get through.
Yeah, that, that was hard language to, to swallow as well, but if we, we're counting everything from July 1st, 2013.
Okay.
And then we're saying when the terms start thereafter. That 2014 language in there says, from that date, from 2014, that, those seats run for three years.
Okay, okay, then I would make a motion that we appoint Belcher, Gant, and Frost to three-year terms, and Newman, Jones, King, and Fryer to two-year terms.
Second.
On this board.
Two of them have to be one-year terms, I'm sorry.
We gotta have a couple of one-years.
Okay, um, you, Fryer and, and King, one-year terms then.
Second.
Okay. I know this is not the way we, we definitely discussed this one, it's an odd, unique situation. Is there any discussion? I think that's, just need to get it going. Okay, any other discussion?
Your meeting will be Friday afternoon.
Let's shoot for-
That first thing in the morning.
Yeah, how about Friday at 1:00, is that four of us, can attend, say, or 2:00?
Three.
I'd, oh, I'd rather get, I don't want them to hold after.
I'm fine, whatever y'all wanna do.
Yeah, I'm okay.
I guess it doesn't matter, I was hoping to-
Can we go 12:00?
Work up early for once.
No, I gotta-
No?
I've, I've gotta meet, name downstairs.
11:00?
11:00.
What about 8:30?
8:30.
Hey, early.
8:30.
8:30, is 8:30 AM good for four commissioners?
8:30.
Does that work for you, David? David?
It'd be a short meeting. This could be quick.
You got something scheduled?
All right, and then our first meeting will be 8:30 Friday, for the Madam Clerk can-
Yes.
Okay.
And since that's a special call-
And then we'll continue to have extensive discussions about the composition. We'll also instruct the clerk to immediately get the advertising for an unspecified number, we haven't really resolved that tonight, unspecified number of spots on the commission. And we will be, we will, as Commissioner Newman said, a gentleman's agreement to-
And this is, with 48 hours, it's a special call, so we have to just lay the topic out, and, okay.
Okay, and the agenda for Friday would be, non, elected chairman, and I guess that's only the order of business.
And authorize him to execute documents.
That would be it. Okay.
And then we meet here.
Do that?
Yeah.
All right, any other discussion that we took the vote? Okay.
Let's do it.
Thank you.
What else we got?
Uh, the last item on our agenda is board, let's, no, we've got the waste, we've got two, two matters from consent, waste-
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, Chairman Gant, point of work, did we, did we vote? We did, we had a motion in the second, but I don't think we voted.
Motion in second, my mistake. All those in favor of appointing those individuals as designated, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. We will, we will move forward. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
No, thank you, that's, that's a pretty good question. Resolution regarding the authorization of agreement between Buncombe and CDM Smith for organic waste processing feasibility study. Mr. Creighton. Now, I appreciate, if, as if Ms. Ball does not sit through enough meetings with City Council, and thank you for attending one of our longer ones, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Board Members, I wanna talk to you tonight about, as you mentioned, the feasibility study to do a, a processing, organic waste processing facility. Kinda give you a little bit of background, a couple of months ago, Kathy Ball, who's Assistant City Manager, called me, and basically wanted to talk about a partnership in doing a study, both the city and the county working together, to look at the feasibility of, of dealing with organic waste, mostly of it coming from city residents, and also a brush. The purpose of the study is to go through and to look at collection methods, obviously, do you modify vehicles, or is it a separate collection, containers? Once the material is picked up, how's it transferred, and the processing facility itself? Is the county interested in that, or is it a private individual that does that? To kind of look at those different options. One of the main things is that we've gotta look at is to see what the percentage of that organic material's in the waste stream. So that's gonna actually take, physically going through a selection of trucks, and just to see what, what is comprised there. But overall, we're gonna look at the cost of collection, uh, the cost impact to the city on doing it, uh, the cost impact on the county, both percentage waste lost, if, if that material's taken out and goes someplace else, what, what effect does that have on the tipping fee? And also, what's the impact if, if we are partner in this, and we do a, a facility, how does that impact our tipping fees? And also, do we look at having a separate tipping fee for organic waste? And, uh, I guess last, and most importantly, is, is, once a finished product, what do you do with it? What, what market is out there? Is there a, a revenue stream for that, or is it just, just a market that people will take it? So that's what we, what we wanna look at in the study. Uh, as of, just a side note, I was looking in the US Today last Thursday, and there was an article in there saying that there's 180 entities in the United States that are doing organic composting now. New York City's looking at it, San Francisco's been doing it for quite some time. So it's kind of that new trend out there to say, okay, here's a stream that is going into the landfill, that's being married, is there something we can do, you know, do with it? So I'd like to ask Kathy, just come up and say a few words as far as, from the city side of it, and then if you've got any questions, we'd be more than happy to, to address them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ball.
Mr. Chairman, Miss Vice Chairman, and members of the board, thank you for letting me be here. Uh, we, we're excited, the city has taken an initiative on to try to reduce the material that we take to the landfill, and have been very successful in the recycling program. The material that we've been able to, to divert from the landfill has been large in volume, but not necessarily in weight. So our next step is to, was to explore and look at the ability to do residential composting. And in order to do that, we, we have a couple of challenges with that. One of them is where to take it and then what to do with it afterwards. Uh, we approached the county and said, we would love the opportunity to be able to look at your facility, so that even if we're not taking it and putting it in the landfill, maybe we're running it across the scales and putting it in some kind of a composting facility at the landfill site. Um, and that would benefit both the city and the county, so that revenues wouldn't be lost from the county in tipping fees. So when we approached John and had the discussion, we saw it as an opportunity for both of us to have success. So we've worked to this point to, to bring you this agreement, that the city would pay half the cost, county half the cost, and then we would be able to come together and see how this could possibly work together. So I appreciate the opportunity to come here, I have enjoyed, and continue to enjoy, a great working relationship with Buncombe County. Thank you.
Let me end up by saying that the, the feasibility study cost is $99,200, and like I say, that'd be split both between the city and the county.
Okay, any questions?
And on our side, it would come through my enterprise fund?
Uh, yeah, professional services.
Yeah, okay.
Is that $99,000 split between the city and the county?
Yes, sir.
Only thing we can do to deal with our waste, and we always wanna partner when it's a good cause, so, sounds like a wonderful program. Any other discussion, comments? Any motion?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Newman, second by Commissioner Frost. Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The motion is approved, 7-0. School Capital Commission Fund Project Ordinance. Thank you, Ms. Ball, I'm sorry that we didn't, she, she sits through enough meetings, I'm sorry you had to sit a little bit longer on this one, thank you. Thanks for your good work with the city.
I'm sorry, did you need me to explain something?
Uh, if you'd just, just tell us what this, I think, we wanted to hear what the ordinance is and what, what it means to us.
Okay, we explained that earlier, that's the Article 39 that will pay for the land purchase.
Turn your mic on.
Correct, it's on, sorry.
Yes, it's the next, it's right above grant project ordinance, the School Capital Commission Fund Project Ordinance. And I think it was connected with the Article 39.
Are there any other questions about Article 39? In Buncombe County, there are four articles of tax. Uh, Article 39 is the one cent tax that, that is paid, half of that, that's generated in Buncombe County, goes to the School Capital Commission Fund and funds school capital projects. And that's the fund that will be used to pay for this land purchase.
And this is just the paperwork to verify what we've just done in, with the income intermediate school-
That's correct.
Site purchase. So we're just doing the paperwork now. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Belcher, is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, the one we just did.
Yes. Uh, second by Commissioner King, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The motion is approved, 7-0.
Hey, um, I have a question just from a kind of-
Sir.
-a process standpoint, so, this was the budget, basically the budget amendment to execute this. This was, so this was on the consent agenda, and I appreciate it being pulled, I learned a little bit just about the different pools of funding, and how they work together. But, um, had this not been pulled from the consent agenda, in the unlikely event that we'd approved the consent agenda, but then not voted to approve the land purchase option, I don't know, I guess, I guess my question is, when we have a budget amendment that's directly linked to an agenda on the item, shouldn't they be, I don't know, voted on, kind of together?
Usually, usually it is a, like a bullet underneath, I mean, it's another line underneath it usually, that's why-
It usually is, and we will certainly make sure.
I was wondering why it was in the consent, so.
Okay, great, thanks.
Good question. Uh, board appointments, Asheville-Buncombe Regional Sports Commission, we have one appointment. Any nominations?
I'm gonna nominate John Craig.
Are there any other nominations? Not all those in favor of appointing Mr. Creighton, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Mr. Creighton is appointed, 7-0. Thank you for one more task for us. Crime Stoppers Board of Directors, there's one vacancy, is there a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Andrea Block.
Andrea, Ms. Block has been nominated, any other nominations? All those in favor of Ms. Block being appointed to Crime Stoppers in the one vacancy, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Ms. Block is so appointed. Announcements, uh, well, do we need a closed session tonight?
Yes. Four matters tonight, closed session, General Statute 143, 31811A, under subsection 3, regards to current lawsuit, Buncombe County CVS 12, 5118, and that's Town of Black Mountain in Buncombe County versus Lexon Insurance Company and Bond Safe Card Insurance Company. That's a defaulted subdivision, the settings where they are, the homeowners through the town are suing to try to get infrastructure money for the failed subdivision, uh, infrastructure. Uh, the second item under subsection 3 is Hannah versus Buncombe County, that's an industrial, uh, that's a workers' comp matter, X 63456, and file X 70617. Uh, also under subsection 4, we have an economic development matter to discuss on a possible renegotiation of an economic development agreement, and, uh, under subsection 6, a personnel matter. Uh, regarding the personnel matter, I don't know whether there'd be any action coming out of closed session or not.
All righty, thank you. We'll ask for a motion after I read the announcements. The next meeting of the board will be August 27th. This is a change from our regularly scheduled meeting due to several commissioners and the county manager being out of town. That, that meeting will begin at 4:30. Commission meetings can be seen on BCTV Charter Cable Channel 2, ATT U-verse Channel 99, live on buncom county dot org during the meetings, or online anytime at buncom county dot org. Is there a motion to go into closed sessions for the reasons stated by the county attorney? It's a move. Been a motion by Commissioner King, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fryer, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We will be in closed session.
All righty.
Alrighty.
How, how can they, how can they get funded by county tax money? But yet not the, not the, uh, employees. I mean, the way I understand the law, it's just living in that area. And, and moving to some.
Well, that's quite, that's quite complex, yeah. The way the law really.
I didn't do that. In theory, they both are taxes, they're tax taxes, and whatever. And that affects them too. But it doesn't affect them either.
Unless they have a bridge somewhere.
You know, like home and property, it doesn't be.
Uh, one would be a.
I just wanted to make sure I had my dates.
If you ever have any back problems, say to me.
I think it's more than walking around with a, I don't have enough to go on. But ladies, suppose I said it too much, I don't know.
Uh, I still walk.
I, I should walk a lot. Uh, but my back, when I try to lay down and sleep, can't sleep on my right side now, and then get about six o'clock. And I can't lay straight on my back. I have to lay on my left side. And, uh, but I can get up and walk. And I can walk for miles. It don't bother. As long as I'm walking. But if I sit, I can sit pretty good. If I sit straight, with my back supported, I do pretty good.
Yeah, well, I can hike, you know, I can walk, but it's walking on pavement and sidewalks. You know, it's just getting harder.
Well, I see.
It doesn't get any better.
Well, hey, what I did, I went to Walmart, and I got on that machine that, uh, have you give you, stuff to go in your insel. I got on that machine and I said, you know, that thing was, it was perfect, it was perfect on what I need. But my shoe always broke down in the right corner on my right foot. I didn't realize why it always does. I got on that machine and it shows my heels, all the cranks on that end. And I got this thing put in the shoe, I, I felt like I was going to do it, that I really was. I was at the table that much. Hey, girl. We're sitting here waiting on them to come back out, let that calendar and back room eat themselves up, right? They're in Coke stations, oh, no, it'd be, it'd be back there about thirty, forty, probably.
Yeah, like thirty, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I just wouldn't believe tonight's deal here, okay? I'll, I'll talk to you. Uh, well, I'm, uh. Right, but that's been like ten. But in a way, it's. I, I got a lot of. But then I'm in, but. You know, come on. We're back after years, like, okay? We'll make something neat. I don't know, I'll talk to you later. I'll see you after. Uh, uh, I'll see you. Okay, okay.
So, do you, do you understand that the meeting on Saturday morning is a mission?
A meeting.
A meeting.
Yeah. Well. CRA meeting is gonna be in here for a time.
I think what they were saying though is that they are wanting to free shoot the others.
Yeah.
I would, I would.
Yeah, they are doing that.
They start. Right.
Yeah, they are doing.
I think, yeah, I think not that, not that.
Yeah. I think they're probably being, like, it's possible they've been more cautious than they're, than they have to be. But then again, I didn't know they were watching.
Hey, listen, we get elected county meeting, we can do anything on.
No, well, I'm not, I'm not.
Okay. You can see them there, too, north beyond us.
Boy, they took Marbury.
No, if you go up yonder, they get clear, no kidding. They really do. I mean, well, I guess that depends on if you got Farvind or New Vision.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, that's in the thirties.
That one?
That one's in the thirties. Look down the thirties, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Look at the model of a car.
Yeah.
My mother, my mother and dad used to come to town and ride these car cars.
Yeah, I remember.
Yeah, my mother and dad.
My grandfather used to talk about it.
Yeah. Mother, mother always talked about how he. What year, what time of year is that? This has been probably in the, uh, thirties.
Oh, the four, that one, where's the, another four.
That's going down across right there.
Yeah, that's.
Try to, the money with it?
Yeah. Yeah, that was on the square.
Where was this, Derek?
That was in the, that was in the bit more house vineyard.
Great fun, yeah. There it is.
I wasn't looking that old, but the Snapchat, not being able to.
That, that was in young.
Yeah. No, it's on the wall.
You, they moved?
Yeah, they put more, they got pictures of.
Going down the hall, you mean, this hall?
No, around here. So, uh, well.
Oh, after where you stand? How would they do it there? The lady was.
Yeah, they put more of the white and white out there.
When you're walking down the hall, you like the smaller picture, cause you got that blur off of this, but whatever, they blur. I can get up down this. Of course, I got, I see that, that is, uh, I can't. Do you read? The other dates would be nice. And who took them, you know? Name?
Yeah, it was.
I love them little traffic cards, but that's pretty cool. There's no buggy right over there, too. That's right. That's right. In California, they got.
That's the perfect guy.
Yeah. I like it, uh. That's a Hollywood script right there, and he, where'd he come? He made a few movies off of it, you know?
Oh, nineteen, nineteen.
Yeah. Look at, look at these folks, how they're all dressed up in black. And that's, that was a big deal back then. I don't believe in seeing anybody that's up here, I'm really. I've been protecting me, that's part.
Oh, yeah.
They probably do that.
At least their pants ain't hanging down.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Did you see that haze? You see that haze in the, in the, in the picture, the haze?
Yeah.
See, back then, everybody burned, uh, coal there. Yeah. Yeah. Isn't there any little traffic cars somewhere?
Oh, I'm sure somebody got one somewhere. Parked.
You know, originally, some.
They probably go up in dirt and somewhere, might got one in the backyard.
Yeah, right beside the school bus. Fifty years old.
We might be thinking, is it a school bus, is it one of them?
Could be. That picture on the way up there, is that, right there, Pac School, or, uh, not Pac School, or that?
That Pac building.
Must have been.
Is that, right there on the left, is that that park? That town?
Which one of them?
That.
Preacher Park?
Yeah, is that Preacher Park right there?
Yeah, home of the, for our five seventy.
Right here.
Right, right.
Or right to the gray. Park.
It's Preacher Park, yeah.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. There you go. Well, that building.
That's a little bank. Is that the same grid?
Yeah, Exon building, we call it Exon building.
Exon building was on that.
Me, that's not the building, that's the building for the building.
Well, I can't see it from here, but is that, that building right there, the current building, or is that building gone?
No, I think this is gone.
Yeah, that's gone, that's.
That's where, like, was it parked?
No, right here, I'm sure.
The bank it's there now is, uh, first citizen bank. Used to have to take somebody up there. I can't remember. I would say they were to the left, White Building. Yeah, is that the hotel?
That's, that's where we're at right now. That's where we're at right now.
No, it's further down.
Probably, just now, so we're all down, yeah.
Court House.
I don't know what that building was.
That's Court House.
Yeah, but it'd be past the courthouse for right now.
Yeah, it would be. It'd be out there where the trips was, but.
It's got Langren, L A N, R E N on the top.
That'd be about where that Renaissance is at, now.
Hey, this says Crassity backwards. It says Crassity right there. Yeah, Crassity. Yeah, they do smart life, like, pretty good. I mean, uh, did that, we marked it, and I'm just like, nice. He did a really cool job. Burnout. Looks like church, they hold on. I don't think they really planned that. But it does.
I've been listening to it.
Fifteen thirty, she was just kind of guarded.
Obviously not yelling.
Maybe she was like, well. Looks like Facebook four.
I got a light day tomorrow, too.
You what?
Yeah, attention, attention. Going piss, do you? I'm doing the program. Other kids. Well, you want me cooking it?
Yes, she wants to be good, but.
I don't know. I guess I left those damn blinds.
What was that team, what? I don't know. Get behind the mud. They be there, they, if I was standing there, they would stand there. Dean's supposed to be standing there, even when he had the jerseys, okay? Dean's supposed to be in here with the prop on, in between the jerseys.
Where do you?
He, he, for most of the time, didn't he? I dare not throw that pill, right now.
I, what, uh, I suppose, uh, I heard, as long as he don't fell around, and obviously, if he needs to come up, he'll shot.
He go back.
He go back, yeah.
Then that's one thing.
Yeah, if he stays in the back, that, that's.
No, he went in. He right there, in front of that post, about three foot, he should stand right there. He's supposed to be there.
I went back there the whole time, but part of the time that I was back there, he, he shut it off, he sat down.
It don't matter, he's got his stand, that's what.
As long as he blocking the exit, right there.
I didn't know. I'm not aware of giving the rules, I, I've never done where.
You're not supposed to have the tripods, except for wrong back wall, and this wall you clear.
Oh, yeah.
That's far more.
I don't know, yeah.
Except for going up to get a shot back.
That's new thirteen now.
Huh?
That's new thirteen now.
Oh, you have a great hoodie.
Just whatever you was gonna get, just record it off of the website, man.
Oh, yeah.
You recorded him doing it, so you need to do a new story on that.
No, I, no, I did, I did record.
You need to do a new story on sale.
I got you, I got, I got.
Here's the list.
Good point, good point.
You don't have to film anything, I got four hares.
Yeah, good point, yeah. Yeah, I like it.
Well, that's what we, at first.
It just don't make sense.
Well, at first, that's what we was under pressure, that's gonna be a media station. That's where, pick it up and just like, you can set your camera up and they can, that, and they, you get like a rope off, that's before you go.
But we leave all the crap back, so.
Not really, you can. We don't use that room right there. Just put them right there. Marked off the little square area, and that way they got person, the both.
Well.
And play the crowd with the pillar, but.
Well, it ma- it makes more sense to move the podium.
Like in the middle?
Over, over there. Right over there, and put the media, right, right in this corner, right here.
Well, there's the doors. Right there.
Right, with the TV up, you know?
You put the podium right in the middle.
Yeah.
Folks, I'm gonna put this film right up the hall, you can line up.
Yeah, and they put the podium back here, where the media can get a safe shot, you know? Uh.
We're not architect, though.
No, it's like, they're gonna block the view.
If we would, we wouldn't be millionaire.
Yeah, we, yeah, we think common sense.
Well, that, that is true, there.
C T's are. They, you know, on their side, they won't get up here, goes and get the slanted shot of the head, and they don't, it's not what they want. And they don't, they don't take it off the screen, cause it's got lighting on there, that's on there, you know?
Oh, yeah.
I can understand, I mean, I got the same problem. I like my new camera, I can, I don't have to use this one, I can take photos.
Oh, well, camera?
Yeah.
Hello?
Yeah.
Nice name.
Yeah.
You probably can't, or you're too, while you're watching. Like, if you're watching food, you probably just take scary shots.
You can, you can, uh, you put it in the frames and get any picture you want.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
It's wild. I mean, wow. It's got.
Holy, now they were.
Ever figure out?
These are can't do at all.
Oh, yeah.
I can video this twelve, thirteen, or something.
Why?
I got two card slots, I got thirty-two gig internal, and then I got two card slots, and I got thirty-two gig in each one. Uh, and, and it's got capabilities, like, if you wanna be in a meeting for an hour.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, that thirty-two gig card, you can probably four out, but you put that card in the first hole, and one in the second. And you can video on the first card, and have it transferred to the second, uh, so it will, uh, you can have two card just slot, in case somebody wanted a copy, you know?
Oh, yeah.
I can, I can copy it at the same time on any one.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's digital, so, it's amazing what technology's got there.
I thought it's, it's smartphone's pretty neat, that camera. It's wild what it's got on. My son, he come up, he left it off, then he come up. And we didn't know that, he picked it out, but he actually, you know, the time to get. We'll give it to him later, we, I'll give it back along.
We can do that.
But I mean, I can get, I can get four of them, really great, it's got wide angle.
Oh.
I can get four of them, really nice.
Oh, yeah.
But you see when they got their camera set for the back?
Oh, yeah.
Sure, they could, if they don't. But they know that, they got some nice stuff, too. You see the quality of what they get up here?
Oh, yeah.
You know, when they're doing that. Oh, God. So if they know that they have to move their camera to back far, then put us in back room? Well, you know, they could put us a, a banquet there. Right, right? You know, where that event is right there, and this event over here, just put us a little event, I mean, a bench right there, or a roll chair, and we can sit up there. And we'd be, we'd be out there eating. And that way, we wouldn't be in excess going out.
Hmm.
You know how to do a conference, you know how to sit before and.
I do.
And sit up.
Oh, yeah.
Your president was not a very.
Who?
Well, David Bush.
Oh, well, David Bush.
Yeah, he had a hard time.
Oh, hell.
They, they had to go into one of the stands, stands.
Stands? Wow, I know that.
Yeah, I just, I got it on here a while. Sixty-seven, you're low.
That's junior, right?
Yeah, yeah. He's sixty-seven.
Singer's, he got cancer?
He, he has.
Or had cancer?
He had something.
Oh, yeah.
He's about eighty-seven.
Oh, yeah. Huh, George Walker Bush. Ever watched that, uh, movie? One him, that he was, about his, uh, George Jordan Junior, they done a, a movie about his. Rise. President. Becoming president, through his whole life.
You mean the young one?
Yeah.
Oh, I ain't seen that.
It was neat.
Well, I think.
Never come in, they, I mean, they went deep into, uh, my, 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 alcohol and.
Smoking sport, cocaine.
They went deep, I mean, it was, it was a wild movie, I never would have.
Well, I know a personal friend. That, uh, the daughter's the one that died. But her mother. Our personal friend with him.
Hmm.
Had, uh, he was in college.
Yeah. Yeah, it was. I knew about that film.
That old David.
Yeah, the movie, that was just wild, man.
I'd like to see that, what's it, what's the name of it?
It's, I just, George, George W.
Oh, is that right?
Or it might even be W.
George W.
I don't know, I think it's George W, or it might be just W. It comes on, uh, Showtime, where they used to, on the, that's where I seen it, Showtime. And I just got to watch it first, and it, you know, starts off, and it's back in the, I guess, seventies, or sixties or seventies, you know, it's where he's, you know, and, you know, kinda. I didn't really know what kind of movie it was, and, uh, more, I said, there works, and I'm like, well, how about all the pigs? All this, I'm like, then it finally dawned on me, George W, okay, and then later on you find out it was him. But, yeah, it was about his days of running for Texas Congress. And he'd keep going in politics, and he'd get, he'd up right. Yeah. But, uh, they talked about how he.
Now, he had a boyfriend in college, yeah.
He had to pick up a.
And he changed his mind.
He made a sort of experience there.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, well, I found me.
I believe, I believe he is. Yeah, I believe he isn't, yeah.
Well, I found me, that was the way they, they did politics back then, but, I mean, it was more, you got here in your company. And, you know, they didn't worry about social media, media, just commercials and spending five billion dollars on election campaigns, that's all they did was, you know, rent something.
Yeah.
They'd go in the parking lot, and burn it up, sort of, off the people.
Yeah.
And, you know, like, Bruce Lee, that was one where he was. It was like a grocery chain, yeah. But he just got the back of the truck, the truck, next thing you knew, there was like two thousand people there coming in, it was just the way it happened.
Yeah.
And talked for hours.
Yeah.
And, you know, it don't happen that way anymore. I don't know, it never happened that way again. They know everything. It's good, but at the same time, it ruins us more away.
Yeah. Yeah, it, it really took that personal.
Made things too complicated.
It took the personal touch away.
Well, that's what's funny, they say, you know, Facebook.
Yeah.
And, uh, all these emails and all these little messenger sites, supposed to keep us in touch, keep us connected. Well, now, I'm, like, some of my family members, I talk to them all the day, the days, and I ain't saying they're weird.
Yeah.
But you talk to them on here, and if you lose that personal interaction, when you get to meet them, you see them the first time in ten years.
You say, who are you?
Yeah. I've done it, I walk up, and I go, now you're what cousin? Now we talk all the time, what cousin are you?
We're, we're trying to get a reunion, we just had one.
Now, it's right, well.
Did a hundred forty some of us, and that's just our meeting.
What rights are you related to?
Mexican.
Mexican.
Big law.
Do you, uh, you know, uh, is there anybody that rings about Fort? Uh, Fort Wright? I don't remember who he is, I know he's, he was, uh, Shepherd brands.
No, no, Shepherd brands, Barnardville, it's.
Oh, he was in there, by, by. I'm gonna say, that's, that's in my family there.
Yeah, close to that. Yeah, I've started on, I've got four hundred percent of people.
I shit my mouth off, I really realized, realized, and took it a while, I really realized, I really cared about my people. I didn't care about my people.
You know, it's too Facebook.
It's amazing.
Well, it's. Facebook ain't nothing, but people waste, the way I view it, is the way people win, now that.
Yeah.
That's all you hear on there is drama and people's problems, you don't ever hear nobody talking about anything good.
It, it really.
I'm sorry, I'll say something like someone.
So, did you know that there's nothing that you do, or say in an email, or text, or any kind, and they still work some more?
Now, text messages, I've looked into it, cause that's what I heard about them, and I looked at text messages, they, unless it's changed, and it probably has, but then, I think, a couple of years, last year, when I looked into it. As far as, uh, looking at it to my effect, one fourth, is if text messages, certainly, you know, I heard seven years ago, they keep, they keep that data that you transmitted for seven years, but they don't actually keep the content. They just keep the you, I texted Greg five years ago, they don't keep the actual words for words.
They might keep.
Now, Facebook and all that, yeah, they, they keep everything, you post it on Facebook, you have to lie.
Well, you don't realize it. Snow, snow, everything, yeah, snow, yeah, snow.
Oh, yeah. And like I said, that's changed and changing, but I'm sure we're.
Yeah.
They give them a lot of bill, if you're being, if you're lucky, they give.
Yeah.
They give them a good.
But just like that bill, it just shows.
Yeah, it's serious.
Well, they say that one's ending, dude.
Yes, no, yeah, no, totally.
And the reason I had to shut down my Facebook page, because when I got on there, I had to put something where I don't want. Never seen, never got my back. I didn't want, I don't want people to see it, I don't want anybody to cry about it.
And you know, and they call it here, that, that kid, bad ass.
Yeah, I'll just shut it, I'll just shut it down, that's why you don't have, don't have to worry about it, or something, they can, they shut it down, I don't worry about it.
I wonder if they came.
Man, I bet they're big enough, they can get up, man.
I've seen a pizza guy, I mean, he is.
Did they award Stanley's map?
No, no, they, he wasn't able to be.
Oh, I was gonna say that, see him.
He must, he must be in pretty bad, cause when he, you know, got retired.
Yeah.
And they give him that award on the building.
Mm-hmm.
They've been hard, they're, yeah, hard. Hard, some people already hard. They raised him to be hard, when they were.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Oh. How was it?
He's about eighty-three.
Now, he, he owned Little Piggies?
No.
No, he didn't, oh, well, he owned Thunder's, huh, did he?
Right there, where the, right here, where the rest is now, from Stevie Hall.
They say. Oh.
He owned, he didn't own, he owned part of building downstairs.
Oh, okay.
Jerry Sternberg. Um, or maybe somebody else that owned, acted by, I mean, moved back.
Wow.
They was in together, you know? Twenty years.
Was a while.
We, we, yeah, it's a teacher.
He, he was, he coached, and then he was friends, like, I had, and he went on.
Well, he's been on there, man.
Yeah, and he went to do, uh, evaluation center, he retired three days time. This make forty time, I'm sure.
Why?
I mean, all government, you know? Jerry Sternberg, you know, you know where I knew, um, that I didn't know, I have some people never heard of, not one people. He was born, he was named, John Ford, James, James Sears.
Hmm.
Now, I guess, uh, we didn't have a family that you worked with, you know?
No, there's never. I know there's one boy, he worked for us. Being, or Don, or Ben, or. I always call him, I don't know, we usually go by last name, uh, there's some people, they're always, that's all I've ever called him, is last name, like, you know, you tell me the first name, I'm gonna do it.
Really, go. Or in Charlie Ford, Charlie Ford.
Yeah, they, they do.
I don't know. Kind of like Sherwin, when they, you, I believe it's a delight mate, he said, they're all in bowling, he said, they don't know, I don't even know.
Oh, yeah.
You know?
Oh, yeah, yeah, man.
You can't get them all together one time, you really don't.
Imagine having a parking lot, you know, oh, my God.
I know, man.
Ten thousand.
Oh, yeah.
Can't that small office?
I'm sorry, I don't care.
Well, you know, when that nine, they were, same house, in New York, that was, that's what, I mean, our apartment, that's what, all mixed up, yeah. I can't imagine, no.
But, uh, L A P D, there's, uh, two guys, I don't know, I don't know if it's L A P D or New York, but I, I remember reading, uh, article. I mean, these weren't just your average police officers, they were tired, these are guys that one of three ranks, I think one retired, because of there, they got different, uh, boroughs, you know, they got everything's different, however, ranks are set up. There was a first lieutenant, admin lieutenant, or admin commander or something, that was a rank player, I mean, he was up there, he was the best.
And he was the road captain.
There was, the ones commanding, the ones handling, they re-met each other, they're not, and they're two high ranking officials of the police, well, they re-met each other. They went to, they had the retirement party at the same time, and they shook hands for the first time, they re-met each other.
Oh, my, who else said that?
That's very good.
Yeah, I mean, if you.
Three thousand.
I couldn't imagine having that many, I mean, I, that's. Be the sheriff of that county, or the police chief. That'd be with a medial company, that would, well, what about this officer's been so and so, I don't know, I didn't know if he worked for me, I don't know. You tell me, I don't know.
Let me get on my phone, see what they have.
Let me call a supervisor, hey, I don't know if you either, but this is the first one.
That's the most, can't imagine doing, charging a agency like that.
Well, that's where you gotta lie on there, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
You focus on being targeted, your hand staff, and they focus on being targeted. Oh, yeah, but it's easier to get twenty captains together.
Look, if you look at the pitch. Do you get kids, or do you have youth service? My God, that's like, he's a monster. You got a secretary, then maybe a secretary, but then, you get, I can, I can bounce it.
Well, that's how it's been.
Our board is out, but like I showed them, I think about that many people.
Oh, yeah.
I'm proud of them. I bet you got.
No, I, I, I forgot.
Well, you got ten, well, you got ten now, also.
Oh, yeah, you got, you ain't gonna have.
Him and he, him and, him and the, or the end.
We don't have those many.
The views you're gonna have.
We got two.
They're ranked, uh, they, they, they.
Yeah.
That's right under, it's just, I don't know, it's, it's a hundred and eight.
Well, I know how, and, uh.
Cause that person's in charge of.
Well, they, they, they split them in boroughs, and they have to speak New York's actually, the paper on there, and I know a little bit about their ranks, right? You got the borough commander, which is, well, the police, if they call them commissioners up there, you got the police chief, under that assistant chief, then you got the commissioners, who's in charge of certain boroughs. Then, under that, under the commissioner, you got the district commander, then captain, then two lieutenants, four sergeants, and then officer. And that's how each bu- each borough's set up, you got like, one borough's like our west, our county's split up in four, east west, north south. That's how they do theirs, except they call them boroughs, north borough, south borough, east borough, west borough, so it's, they got one. They got, they got, yeah, it's, police commissioners, yeah, and they said, it's like, it's the board, the officer come in, they do meetings, and, I mean, it's, it's wild.
Wonder where the, wonder where the gun range is.
Well, up there, probably Queens or one.
There's on the street, there's on the street every day.
I'm telling you, Los Angeles, there's a movie, It's In the Watch, that, uh, they've come out, like, a couple months ago, three months, four months, it's.
What's it called?
In the Watch.
In the what?
Yeah, it's a police movie, and there's, if you can't take Kyle Lane, or there's a lot of Kyle Lane in it, but that's, that's the most realistic police movie that's come out in a long time. Especially for a city like that, and I'm here, no, I don't go on, but Los Angeles.
Yeah.
That goes on.
It, it, I got a, and these are good, and they're out, can't tell if they're fucked up. He probably, maybe.
Yeah.
Weird old, right now, but he's, he's.
Oh, yeah.
And he's got, he's got videos that are very rare, he can out, he can kill.
Oh, yeah.
And also, he, he showed me some. People that, best thing that could have been, uh, run down, you know? They got, they, they turn out.
Oh, yeah.
He's up, he's head, he's bringing that. He said, he said, I'm sorry, he said, I didn't know if that, I didn't know if that bothered you or not, you know? I said, oh, no, it don't bother me. One, one of the.
You go up there, I'm right there.
Oh, man.
Good night.
Uh, voices are carrying in here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, mine, axe around.
Can I ask you, uh?
Up in the meeting?
Get it down here.
Better not. I think he's coming.
I'm getting ready to house, darn.
I'm hungry, too. Good luck. Nice.
All righty, it is, uh, eight twenty-two, we're back in, is there a motion to go back into open session? Motion by Commissioner Frost, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Jones, is there any discussion? Uh, we will not be taking any action on any of the items we discussed in closed session, um, and so is there a motion to adjourn?
To move.
Motion by Commissioner Belcher, second by Commissioner Jones, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, we adjourn till August twenty-seventh.
See you guys.
Any help, carrying anything?
Nope, nope, good, good.
I got it.
Eight thirty, new C R A boards meeting here, this, this commission's on eight thirty.
Or is that closed?
What? You know what?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Thank you, I'm sorry we kept you so long.
Thank you.